For 10th, 2014, can the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Burt. Councilmember Berman. Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Klein. Vice Mayor Niss. Councilmember Price. Councilmember Scharf. Councilmember Schmidt. Mayor Shepherd. Parks and Rec Commission members Ashland. Hutterly. Knopper. Lowing. Markovich. And Rechtal.
Here.
Okay, this is our annual meeting with the Park and Rec Commission. And I'm going to turn this over to the Chair of Park and Recs. And she will introduce what we're going to be going through this evening and get us caught up. And we have a nice packet here with some material that you should have already been able to read. And so I'm going to turn it over to you, Jennifer.
Thanks Nancy. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, so good evening to all of you. I'm going to start off with a little process background and then just get right to our update and our presentations for the evening. This isn't close enough? It doesn't come? All right, I'm trying to speak loudly too. When Vice -- is that better? Thanks. When Vice Chair Lowing and I met with Mayor Shepherd to talk about tonight's meeting, she asked us to provide some detailed background information so council members could better understand the context of our discussion and think through some of the issues. Unfortunately, staff insisted on removing Memo on the Dog Parks from the packet, so I apologize for that gap. But what you do have in your packet is a standard look back list that gives you a quick summary of our work over the last year and a fact sheet on what we're learning about the 7.7 acres at Foothills Park. So looking forward to 2015, we plan to wrap up work on the big strategic item, the Master Plan on Parks and Recreation, and several other efforts, including the 7.7 acres, the shared use dog park pilot, reviewing the community services and natural environment elements of the comp plan as part of the update process you all discussed last week, enhancement of our community gardens program, the Bixby Park Trails Project, an update of our commission website, and the several other park improvement projects and other items that come to us as a matter of course. Just to give you a quick update on the master plan, we have three ad hoc committees who are working with staff and consultants on the outreach process, as well as regular discussions with the full commission to provide input and oversight. The data's finally starting to come together. In addition to several public intercepts, we've had a survey going out as soon as next week, I think. And the final of three community workshops will be held in early December. For the most part, so far, we've focused on identifying possible gaps in input and data collection, so we can have a full and well-rounded information to analyze as we move into the prioritization process early next year. And I understand council will get a staff report and an update on the consultant's progress sometime later this month. Once the plans finalize, we hope to move forward quickly with funding and implementation of facility improvements and programming consistent with community priorities. And tonight we'll have three short presentations. First, Vice Chair Lowing is going to talk a little bit about future investments related to the master plan. Then Commissioner Knopper will give an update on the work of the 7.7 acres ad hoc committee. And finally, I'll highlight some of the key issues that have arisen in our work on the dog park pilot. Then we'd like to open up to hear from you, any reactions or insights about the materials we present, any other questions about our other work, or thoughts about completely different topics you'd like us to take up in the coming year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Lowing.
Okay, thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission about three years ago created an ad hoc committee to work with staff to help prioritize the projects, the capital improvement projects for parks recreation, open space. We really feel that our overall mission with Park is to improve the quality of life of Palo Alto, pure and simple. So with that in mind, just like to mention two things tonight that as this goes forward, we'd like your help and consideration on. The first one is that the CIP planning process for Park this year is decidedly different than any previous years precisely because the city's making such a significant investment in the strategic master plan. You all know the current process of CIP is using a quantitative scoring system with priced out projects and go through a process and comes out at the end with projects approved over a five-year period. This year, we would recommend a change in that process for Park specifically precisely because we really can't prioritize the CIP projects entirely until we get the master plan back, and that plan could reveal surprises or not. But we want that to drive the CIP process for Park going forward. Given the likely timing of the report, which is now summer of 15, will be a little bit off-cycle there, so what we would recommend is that this year, that a certain dollar amount be recommended by staff that can be a holding place for the priority projects that do come out of the master plan process. So this would be kind of a one-time process change that we recognize is quite different. But we really want the master plan to guide the future priorities, and that's really kind of the only way to do that. So we'd like you to give that consideration. And then the second thing we'd just like to alert you to is with respect to implementation of CIPs after they're approved, we're privileged on the commission to work with fantastically dedicated and hard-working staff that are here in front of you. And it's terrific, but so many people can only do so much. With present staffing levels, all approved CIP projects can't get started right away, even after they get approved. Right now, for example, there are six approved park projects that won't get started on right away because there simply just isn't enough staff to manage the implementation of the projects. So they'll have to be pushed out a little bit. Currently, we have one city landscape architect who has the primary responsibility for managing most of the projects. And prior to the economic downturn, there were actually two, so obviously that's a 50% reduction. If we could get that second person back in the saddle, it's estimated that we could get about three more projects managed per year by the staff, so we could get just a lot more done. Obviously, it's frustrating for all of us that we finally get something approved and financed, and we're ready to go, and we still can't really get going. So we would like to ask council to be open to consideration of approving staff during the next budget cycle as it comes up. This might sound like these two issues are contradictory. Why be asking for more if we can't even get the first ones done? Well, it's not contradictory, it's actually additive. There is a backlog of projects that we're trying to get done, like other departments in the city. And on top of that, it is likely that the master plan is going to reveal, you know, new needs that have to get done for the future. So this is where you come in as a council. Your help is needed on both process and staffing, so we can move forward and, you know, keep making park improvements for the citizens of Palo Alto. Who's next? Abby?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good evening. The Park and Rec Commission has signed an ad hoc committee to facilitate the development of ideas for specific land uses for the 7.7 acres that were newly dedicated at Foothills Park. And in your packet, we attached a fact sheet with all of those findings thus far, including all the public comments that we have collected, a site map of the actual area, and a fact sheet for Actera, who currently has a nursery on-site. So what I want to do this evening is provide an overview, a summary, to tell you where we're at currently and the information that we've gathered thus far. So the city has a lease obligation with Actera currently. They had their nursery on-site since 2003. They utilize approximately 0.53 acres of the total 7.7 acres, and their lease expires in 2015 and can be renewed by mutual consent of Actera and the city. The 7.7 acre parcel is the former staging ground of a quarry. And the hillside on the north side, or the right side, as you enter the property, is composed mostly of quarry waste materials. There's a lot of tree growth there as well. Approximately 2.1 acres, the flat area is primarily what I'm going to be speaking about, has about five feet deep worth of this poor soil creeks, deposited creek sediment from Buckeye Creek, as well as the quarry spoils. So let's talk about the impact of Buckeye Creek on the parcel. Buckeye Creek's been significantly channelized since the 1950s. There was a significant flood in 1983 that also sort of chopped up the flow, the natural flow of this creek. The first time this creek flattens out is on this approximate 2.1 acres. So this is where all the sediment comes flowing down and sort of lands in this area. During a rainy year, approximately 30 to 100 yards of sediment needs to be cleaned up two to three times during that rainy season. If it's an extremely rainy year, and we're lucky to get that, it could be as much as between 500 and 600 yards of sediment. That sediment has partially been put back on this 2.1 acres. Some of it has been moved away, and some of that has been put up into the hillside. The private neighbor that owns the three sides surrounding the parcel has done the cleanup at his cost up until now, and it will now be the city's responsibility to remove the sediment at the creek. This is also the last opportunity for us to clear the sediment before it moves into a large calvert, a giant pipe, for lack of a better way to describe it. That's on the back right-hand portion of the creek. This is a very precarious open pipe. That can be very dangerous to anyone who were to venture down. So moving forward, this would have to be, we would have to create some sort of perimeter for this area to protect the public for any children or people that find it curious to examine a giant pipe with flowing water through it. Due to Buckeye Creek's size and its undeveloped watershed because of all the channelization that I had described, it would be a high-quality habitat for some wildlife, but currently it is not. There was a $75,000 CIP last year for a hydrologic study of Buckeye Creek to figure out how we can look at this creek and better utilize it for a natural habitat, and that CIP was not approved. And that certainly is something that we should think about looking forward. With regard to easements and other restrictions of the area, this approximate 2.1 is essentially the only usable area portion of the parcel, because the rest of it has steep hillsides. There are exclusive landscaping easements, approximately 11 easements on the property, including irrigation, sewage, and fencing improvements, as well as required setbacks from the actual creek. The city must also maintain an emergency ingress and regress of the property right through the middle for emergency personnel. And there is a 50-foot setback requirement that limits any kind of permanent structure or parking facility near the creek. There is only one public entry and exit point, which currently is where the fence is, because the rest of the area is private property surrounding. So they're the current conditions. So let's talk about what we've done as far as outreach thus far. We've done some public outreach. We had four ranger-led tours in October that anyone was welcome to join. We had approximately nine members of the public participate. All the rangers took notes. I believe Attachment A is all of the comments from all of the public. We also, in mid-October, Saturday, October 18th, held a public meeting for any member of the public to attend. We had a tour prior to that meeting. 10 people participated in that tour, and 27 people were present. Again, all of their comments are in the attachment. But basically, there were three major themes from the public that came from these meetings. The first is restoration. People would like to see a restorative nature to this property. This property has basically been a dumping ground, per se, for many generations. The Lee family used it to put their spoils, and then it was the former quarry site as well. The second theme is that Actera would stay a participant on the land and maybe extend an offer to other like-minded environmental organizations. And the third is to add recreational facilities to the park, like a primitive picnicking area, structure for special events, or off-dog-leash park opportunities. So as I've just explained, there are a lot of physical and structural challenges associated with improvements of this parcel. The site development and restoration potentially have significant costs associated with it. Obviously, we want to incorporate all of your comments this evening with regard to your thoughts. But as Ed mentioned, the Park and Recreation Master Plan is a very integral piece of the learning for us. If there are any gaps in our recreation, or significant gaps that we're not providing the public, we would certainly have some wonderful recommendations by looking at that research from a strategic perspective. And then what we're hoping to do is take all of this information and develop a recommendation for future land use for council's review. Thank you.
Okay, here's our last spiel. Here we are to talk about dog parks again, as we do every year. As you know, we hope that the master plan will help us evaluate potential for full-time dog parks in new areas of the city. But in the meantime, we've been sorting out details and looking at options for a six-month pilot, allowing dogs off-leash on a fenced athletic field during limited hours. We think a shared use pilot will help serve interim needs. It'll help us test usage and behavior, and it'll help us evaluate impacts on neighbors and other users, as well as facility wear and tear. So we think we're about ready now to present some fleshed-out options for public consideration. So our next steps are to consult with adjacent neighbors and organized user groups, and to hold community outreach meetings with the broader public. What we learn from that outreach will then be incorporated before finalizing a proposal for your consideration here in council. We looked at all our city parks for potential sites with the size and amenities to support a low-cost temporary pilot, and we concluded that the options for near-term action are really pretty few, boiling down to the Baylands Athletic Center, Greer Park, and Hoover Park. Since you don't have our detailed pros, cons, and costs before you, I'll just outline some key characteristics of those sites and some bigger-picture issues. Unfortunately, all of those sites fall in the Midtown East-West corridor that's already served by two small dedicated dog parks. Nonetheless, they do offer useful testing grounds. They vary in size from 3.3 acres to about two acres to just under one acre, respectively. And they present a very large park on the edge of town, as opposed to a large neighborhood park with few adjacent residences, and a medium-sized, very heavily-used neighborhood park with a lot of immediate neighbors. Startup costs, we expect, would range from a few thousand dollars up to about $25,000. In addition to the pros and cons inherent to each site, which we plan to explore further through our public outreach, we think it's important to consider impacts beyond the limited hours and duration of a pilot. So we've heard from other communities that once you open a park to off-leash dog use, it can be very difficult to later curtail that use. And also, that allowing new limited use, even during short times, can contribute to more use during unauthorized hours. So given that illegal off-leash use already occurs at Greer Park and Hoover Park, as you all are aware, we don't want to exacerbate that problem with a new pilot program. So we hope to minimize those risks with clear messaging that the pilot is a short-term, temporary test site, and providing stepped-up targeted enforcement at any pilot site. Unfortunately, Animal Services informs us that their resources can't stretch beyond complaint-based enforcement at this time. So we're now looking into the possibility of maybe some targeted oversight using contracted staff hours. But in the long run, if we pursue permanent shared use or open additional full-time dog parks, we think as a policy matter that enforcement of rules and hours of use will be vital to justifying the compromises made by neighbors and other park users, as well as to secure and maintain community buy-in over the long run. So we encourage you to consider increased resources for leash law enforcement in the long run. And from what we've heard, that likely would be a welcome investment even without any new dog parks. Finally, concerns about our ability to terminate off-leash use at the end of the pilot and the close proximity of the sites that we're looking at make us nervous about opening multiple test sites, having two pilots operating at the same time. On the other hand, however, dual test sites at both the Baylands Athletic Center and one of those neighborhood parks could provide really useful data about usage and the desirability of very different models. One very large, mostly single-use facility with high fencing that would probably be a driving destination versus a smaller walkable site in a popular neighborhood park that already has many different users. So as we get ready for community outreach, we'd love to hear your thoughts on enforcement and the risk versus return of a dual-site test pilot, as well as any other issues we should be sure to address with the public. And with that, I will welcome your reactions and questions to any of the material we presented or any other topics. I'll turn it back to Mayor.
Sure, if you want to try to flip your light, if you'd like to ask a question or give me a hand signal. I see, Greg, is that you trying to get your light on? Okay, Councilmember Schmidt. And you did it.
Yeah, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Parks and Rec for all the work they've done throughout the year, bringing us ideas and notions and vetting lots of important issues. Specifically, I guess during the last year, the role you played on the 7.7 acres was very valuable and helpful. And thank you, each one of you, very much. Just a couple notions occurred to me as you're reading through your report. I want to spend a little time on the 7.7 acres. The report hydrology and geography of the site, limiting the effective area to 2.1 acres and pointing out how that is susceptible to both the old quarry use and the stream, making it a very difficult thing to work with. I will note that in Item 14 tonight, we're going to be talking about the city outreach to get services. And one of the services is the supply of sand, rock, and gravel. Another one was to cart debris away. Five firms came and said they wanted a contract to supply sand, rock, and gravel. Two said they'd work on carting it away. Now, that seems to imply, I don't want to make any comparisons with the 49ers, but that seems to say that what you have up there might be of value to the city and the commercial markets, rock, sand, and gravel. You have quarry rock, which was picked out because of its ability to be a high-grade quality rock. And you have stream sediment, which, as I recall from my geography, the Mississippi Delta is probably the richest farmland in the world because it's got stream sediment. So it seems to me, you know, you should, as you work through and explore these issues, make sure you take into account the economic value of what's there and see if there might be cooperation from the private sector to say, gee, I'll help you with that problem. I'll pay you to help with that problem. Second element we ran into recently was a grand jury report saying that the council was not open and public enough about the 7.7 acres. So as you move forward in your planning, I would highly recommend that you try and offset the problems that the council created by making it a public aspect. One of the things, I guess before you go very far in the planning, there should be a period of time, maybe it's a weekend, where the community is invited in to see that asset. I was in once, and I think it is aesthetically an absolutely fantastic piece of land. And I think if you've got people in there. So I would recommend maybe not having guided tours and getting nine people on the guided tour. I'm a regular user of the park, and I had no idea you were giving tours. Of just opening it up and publicizing in the community that that land is open for anyone who wants to go visit it over a weekend, and use that as a public outreach to generate really widespread ideas and to get the community to be able to assess the value of that park. Two other small notes. Your master plan process is going on the same time that the city is doing their comprehensive plan, and you should take into account what has come out of the housing element and plan, and you should take into account what has come out of the housing element and the forecast of how many people there will be in Palo Alto, who, probably a growth rate of something on the order of an eight or nine tenths of a percent per year, which is a substantial number over time. And your master plan should at least address the issue of, at that level, what is needed? What should we start thinking about now to meet our goals for Parks and Recreation with a, with a growing population? One last thing, I note we get some data every so often to help us with the comprehensive plan. Last one was this draft existing conditions report. Has a very nice picture on the cover. I think it's just a Google map of Palo Alto, but caught my attention immediately. And if you look at the picture of Palo Alto, the area north of Oregon Expressway is a dark green. The area south of Oregon Expressway is a very light green or brown. Now, if you are doing something about a master plan that involves our canopy, our urban forest, the question might be, why are there different colors on our city? Thank you very much.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes, and thank you for your hard work and creative work. I think that the hard work's not enough. It's got to be creative and thoughtful, and I think that you all are doing that, so thank you. I appreciated the comments in all three areas, and I'm going to mention all three since I have concerns about all three. The first question is on the master plan. You sort of alluded to potential new products and projects, excuse me, and maybe you can give us a preview of coming attractions?
We can't. That's the exact point, is that we have to wait for that to, to play out before we can do prioritization.
No, but that's not my point.
Okay.
We have had, for years, a long list of potential projects that change from time to time, but you seem to be referring to some new ideas that have come along. And if you do have some new ideas, I'd like to know about them now, just so that we can begin thinking about them rather than having them come as a surprise next year.
No, I, I think we're feeling that as we plot demographic changes, growth changes, et cetera, that there might be some new things that, that come up that we might need to address in the master plan, and that that should drive the CIP process. So we're not, we're not going into it with any assumptions that there are some things that are going to pop up, we're just saying that they, that they might. That's why we're doing it, really.
Okay, I'm going to try one more. Has anybody proposed any, whether a member of the commission or citizens of, of new projects that the city ought to be undertaking?
Well, I think you'll see, and when you get your presentation from staff later this month, you'll get to see some of the data that's come in from all the outreach efforts, and it really does a good job of both summarizing and providing great detail in the issues that people wanted to put before us and wanted to think about, like, dog parks came up very often, mountain biking, badminton, bocce ball, you know, there, kind of that kind of activity, but also issues of connectivity to Parks and Recreation Resources. There may be opportunities there where we can really improve connections, and I think you'll, you'll get a lot more detail on that in the coming weeks from the folks who are really expert on the data. But I think the other point that's going to be useful to keep in mind, that's going to inform us from the master plan, is it may be that the CIPs we have kind of mapped out into the long run, maybe those aren't the projects that ought to be first on the list. It may be that there's a shifting of priorities in terms of what we want to invest in.
Okay. Let me return to the dog park, and I will freely confess my conflict of interest as a dog owner. And one who, with many, many other dog owners, feels frustrated by the, the city. And have you all talked to Menlo Park, which I understand has a successful shared program and doesn't seem to have the problems that you alluded to? So have you conferred with Menlo Park and then gotten their input?
We have. We, we talked to Menlo Park, as well as a number of other communities that operate shared-use dog programs, as well as the Menlo Park Dog Owners Group and our Palo Alto Dog Owners Group. You may be aware that they're up to over 300 members now and really anxious to get moving on something. In Menlo Park, I believe they're in the process of, they're hoping to transition from that shared-use model into a dedicated, full-time model. So they haven't yet gone through the transition of trying to close a part, a, a use that they've opened up, whereas we possibly would with a short-term pilot.
Is Menlo Park's use of a school ground, is that correct?
It's a baseball field.
It's owned by this, by one of their school districts?
No, it's a city.
Owned by the city?
City facility.
Lastly, I, I agree with Councilmember Schmidt on the idea of having one or two days when the 7.7 or now 2.1 acres is available for public inspection, but I get there from a very different reason. I'm worried that this is not a, a very usable site or one where we ought to be putting our resources. I have walked it, and I'm not surprised by the, the findings that you've made so far. So I, I, I think there's been a misperception in the public. They see the word 7.7 acres foothills land, and they think that it's like the rest of Foothill's Park, and of course, it's not. So I would, would certainly join to say that I think the public ought to know what the real facts are and how difficult this property is going to be. And I, I hope that pretty soon you'll be able to, and I realize it's very premature, but come up with some estimates of what this would possibly cost to, to put into shape where the public would really use it. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Hi, and let me join the chorus of those who, especially as liaison for a couple of years to this commission, know that you work very hard, you're very dedicated, and you're proactive and creative, and I very much appreciate your work, so thank you so much. I'm going to focus on a couple of three things. One is appreciate your CIP involvement and want to understand if there's something that would help promote that involvement. You know, earlier involvement, timely involvement, do you get the information you need, anything like that that might, might help facilitate that? So that's a question. I'm always interested, as you all know, most of you do anyway, who were there when I was there, about Sterling Canal, if there's any update on that potentiality for use and constraints or lack thereof, or if there's been clarity determined on that yet. And then about the 7.7 acres, I agree with having it open on a couple of days. I also wonder, because there's a lot of can't do this, can't do that in the report, and I think Councilmember Burt asked some very good questions, and I'm just wondering if at some point in time, it might not be helpful to move along the process if we just had a dedicated joint meeting with Parks and Rec about the 7.7 acres, because we're not going to get through those issues this evening. So I'm just wondering if it might, might be beneficial to have such a meeting. So those are my questions, and I have several others, but because of time and sharing the time, I'll limit it to those three. So I don't know who you want to have answer those, but...
For the first question...
I can take that.
First question, you want to take the CIP?
Yeah, basically, each year, this is the third year, and each year, we've moved the process earlier, frankly, at, at our request, and staff has been completely receptive to that, and the entire process is working extremely well. Each, each of the three years has gotten better. We've gotten out ahead of it, prioritizing it. Last year, we agreed entirely, and this year so far, we've agreed entirely on the, on the priority, so it's working well right now.
That's great. And just one comment about that, too. It's like the CIP that was not approved last year for the, I don't know if it was $75,000 or $85,000, that was before it was dedicated as parkland, too. So just kind of like make that, make that point, so that might, it might actually make the cut this year. Then the other two questions?
So then, for the Sterling Canal question, I'll turn it over to Commissioner Cromie. She and Commissioner Ashland were on an ad hoc committee this year that has, I think, begun some investigation of that, and they may have something.
Well, yeah, so we're on a, as Commissioner Hedley, as Chair Hedley said, we are working on it, on an ad hoc committee. Unfortunately, we haven't made great progress on it. We have made some, we've, we've done a tour of the site, and we see more fencing has gone on there than was there previously, so we tried to get to the bottom of that, but didn't get very far. So there's some, we need to do, the bottom line is we need to do more work, and it's a little bit confusing because it's sort of multi-jurisdictional within the city, so we have to, I think some of our answers will probably come from speaking with the Planning and Transportation Division. We really have not gotten to the bottom of that, what's going on in that piece of land very well. So I think you're giving us more impetus to go back and ask that question. We are looking at it in relationship to studying the need and desire and possibilities for community gardens within the city. So we've done those, we've done, we've been moving forward on that question as well, but we're just not ready to report on it yet.
Is there any possibility that that might be considered for a dog park? And if you need assistance in getting unstuck in terms of trying to get response from multiple jurisdictions, multiple departments, then I hope you'll pose that question to the council.
Okay, yeah. I mean, we did, we did consider it for a dog park as well, and Darren Anderson, do you have anything to add to this? Were you with us on the tour when we were considering all those things? Can you fill us in a little bit?
Sure. Good evening, Darren Anderson, Open Space, Parks and Golf. I worked with the ad hoc committee addressing the Sterling Canal and its applicability for either community gardens or the dog park. We met with Utilities Department and conferred with them, and they said they have plans to use that land. The reason the fence went up is because they use it, they weren't willing to, you know, we asked, well, are there segments of it that could be bifurcated up so we could use it for one of these two options? And they had said no. They weren't, they weren't able to give that land out.
Quick responses. It would be nice to know why and what and, you know, all of that, because it's, they've not been using it for all these years, so... And then the joint meeting about the 7.7 acres, Chair?
Yeah, I'm wasn't sure that was a question you would like to hold, a study session on the 7.7 acres?
Well, I'm thinking so, but I'm wanting to know if, from the Chair, from the Chair and the Commission's perspective, that might be helpful to help kind of maybe move it along more quickly and get some answers more quickly.
Sure, I, I will defer to the ad hoc committee, but I think, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. Pat, do you want to?
I think that would be a good idea. I think it should be a little farther down the road, because we still have a lot of work to do with the ad hoc committee and staff to make sure that we can give you the best information possible, and the count, the commission also has not discussed it as a whole yet. So I think that it's a good idea, but I'd push it out a little farther and not be eager because a number of us on the commission think, well, we don't want this to fall prey to the process. It would be a good idea to make sure that we're doing it right, because we get one shot at this, so... But a joint study session would be good.
Councilmember Berman?
So I like, thank you to Councilmember Holman for her suggestion of, of the joint study session. I like that idea, and then thank you to Commissioner Markovich for her, her kind of honest assessment of what needs to happen before that meeting happens. I wonder if that's something that we could even have at Foothill Park on a weekend or something like that, and, and schedule a tour before the meeting for, you know, try to generate interest from members of the public to actually see it. But clearly, as we saw from questions from council members before tonight's meeting and questions that are happening tonight, there are plenty of questions, and we definitely want staff to have the time. We want the commission to have the time to come up with some of the questions and, and staff the time to answer them sufficiently so that we don't waste our time at that joint study session. I jumped the gun and didn't say thank you. Thank you, guys, for all the work that you guys do. You know, I was really impressed reading through the report. I, I didn't count up how many ad hoc commissions. I guess it's three. It seemed like more than three. A lot, a lot. And, and, you know, that's because there's a lot going on in Palo Alto. You know, we all care so deeply about our, our parks and open space, and so that means a lot of work for you guys. So thank you for that. One question that I had, a couple colleagues have brought up the idea of opening up the 7.7 acres to the public, kind of, it seems like in a, in a unsupervised way, and I, I haven't, you know, analyzed this, this idea too much, but it seems like there might be some security concerns based on the, the kind of situation on the 7.7 acres right now. I don't know if staff has any thoughts before we get too far down that road about that idea, since a couple members have, a couple colleagues have brought it up. If there are any problems with that, or if that's a good idea?
Yes, it's a great question. I have discussed it with Actera, who's got the nursery, and they've got significant investment in plant material there. If we leave that gate open unattended, it's not just the people getting in and potentially interacting with the facility that's not secure and not really intended to be open at this point. They need a little time to prep, to secure that off, both from people and from deer. Secondly, Mr. Iaga, his property borders the 7.7 and his caretaker, and it's not secured at this time, so...
Meaning there's no fence?
Right. You'd be walking right into his front yard and into his barn.
I've been curious, so maybe that's a way to go check it out. No.
And then, thirdly, there's a culvert, a large culvert, that ideally we'd have secured off with some fencing before we had people go into the site.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing up the concerns two of you guys did about staffing issues and, and staff being spread thin, which I think, you know, we're all, staff levels stay the same, and the amount that we pile on them tends to increase, and so I can definitely understand that. One question that I'd encourage staff to consider in regards to the project management of some of the new projects that are coming up, we, you know, I don't know how long-term of a need that's going to be, and so maybe there's the possibility of using, you know, a consultant, I don't know if consultant's probably not the right term, but somebody on a, on a contract basis, thank you, as opposed to a full-time staff member. One thing that we always have to weigh is the, the long-term costs of adding additional staff. And you guys mentioned that you'd prepared a memo for the dog park that, that isn't before us today. Is there, do we know if that will be coming to us at some point, or?
I think that will likely, I'm not sure, I think we have to nego, sorry, negotiate that a little with staff, but certainly it would come before you with great detail when we're ready to present a recommendation.
Great.
And I expect that even if we're not ready with a proposal, we may well be able to send you something after we've completed the public outreach.
Great. I think it would be helpful to, to see something in writing, you know, as well as, you know, to get a better sense of all the work that you guys have done and folks you guys have talked to.
And just to add, much of that information is already in public record, because we discussed the draft as a commission.
Gotcha.
I think it was...
Great point.
...the month before last. You can probably find kind of the bulk of it.
Like September-ish? Perfect.
And an earlier version.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. I actually had similar questions to Councilmember Berman on some of those. So what I took out of that was that we can't open it up to the public without securing it first, right?
Yes, ideally, we'd have a ranger there, present. I mean, they could walk about the land. We just need someone there to ensure they're not walking into private property and just respecting the, the neighbors.
So if we were to open it up for a few days, we basically have a ranger there to make sure that they don't, all right? How long would it take to secure it so that it could be open to the public generally?
Actera is under different challenges financially to raise money and the capital to secure it. They're also a little concerned about putting up fencing at their cost without security and whether they'd be renewing their lease for sure, and, and the changes that might come with this whole 7.7 acres and implications that might affect them. As for Mr. Iaga, we haven't gotten to that level of discussions on how long it would take to get it.
When you say it's financially challenging for Actera, what are we talking about in terms of cost? Is this $75,000, $100,000, $10,000? I mean, what are we talking?
I'm sure it's, I don't know the, exactly the level of security they're looking for. I mean, we're kind of preliminary in discussions. They just explained, we would need to put up fencing in advance, give us as much heads up as you can. They needed to protect from deer and people, and I don't know how much of it, but I would, if I was to put a guess, I would say somewhere around $10,000.
So my interest would be seeing it open as soon as possible, and I would hate $10,000 to, to stand in the way of that. I mean, if, that's frankly, and, and the amount of money that comes to us, that's a very small amount of money. It would be nice to have this open to the public as quickly as possible. I don't know if the Parks and Rec Committee feels that way. $10,000 seems an awfully small amount of money standing in the way of opening it to the public.
Darren, is that $10,000?
Darren, is that $10,000 just to secure the nursery area, you're saying?
That's correct.
So, the culvert, the culvert has to be secure as well because someone could eas, so that's fencing in addition.
So, do we have a sense then what it would take to be able to open it to the public in terms of a, a dollar amount?
I still need a little time to put those figures together.
Do we have a range? I mean, or are we just no range law?
No.
It's difficult because the whole back part of the property is completely open, so if someone walked out, they would be walking onto private property. There's no natural transition. So, I think it's difficult to estimate a specific cost at this point without looking at how, how much space we'd have to fence.
Can I just clarify your question?
Sure.
Are you asking how, what would it take to be able to open it to the public full time or are you asking about for this?
No, no, I was asking full time. So, what I got was that we could open it for a few days and have a ranger up there just for those few days for the public to come. But I'm looking at our ranger-guided tours. We had four days, we got nine people. That didn't exactly seem to me to be an overwhelming response. So, it struck me as that would be nice, you know, I would hate to see this be a year-long, two-year process where we decide what to do with the property and things just sit fenced off. And so, my question really was, what is the magnitude of cost to secure it so the public can come visit? Are we talking $25,000? Are we talking $50,000? Are we talking 15? You know, it may be worth spending that money early so the public can have access to it because things tend to just sit around otherwise and, you know, this, I mean, for good reason. There's decisions to be made and that. So, that was really my question on that. My, my next question was on how the structure of this, of the ad hoc committees work a little bit. You have seven members on the, here, right? So, is it, everyone's on a different ad hoc committee or are some people on more than one? And how many do you have? Three, I think I heard, right? Or is there more than three ad hoc committees? There's more. How many ad hoc committees are there?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I'd say at least seven.
I'd say seven to 10.
One for each member of the Commission, right?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot of work. It really helps, having the ad hocks really helps us dig down into the tricky issues and frame them for the Commission so that we can have a fuller discussion and kind of move forward.
So, how many people are on an ad hoc committee?
Typically, it's two, sometimes it's three.
And those people have a series of meetings with staff, is that correct?
Yes.
Over, are we talking three months, four months, a year, two years? I mean, how's it work?
Totally depends on the issue.
And do they then come back to the full Commission? Is that the?
Yeah.
And then from the full Commission, you discuss it and then, and then vote on it?
So, typically, the ad hoc will, once they're assigned, will prepare a work plan that they present to the full Commission saying, "These are the things we think we should look at, this is how we're going to proceed, these are going to, steps we're going to take to come up with an understanding of the issue" that we can then present to the full Commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. And thank you for your service. I know it's a lot of work and you guys do a great job.
Councilmember Price?
Thank you. The Parks and Recreation Commission sends, sets a gold standard for all the awards and commissions for the city. And again, we all commend you for your dedication. What is really exciting about your work is the, the amount of effort and commitment that you demonstrate, your thoughtful approach to solving complex problems. I am absolutely convinced that our, all of our parks and recreation programs are in very able hands. And the, the issue about the ad hoc work, of which I find commendable and intriguing, is our already very fine and dedicated and passionate staff. Your work really amplifies the possibilities within this department because by bringing well-informed conversation and detail and ideas and outreach work, it really makes it possible to expand their work and to expand the outcomes for the city of Palo Alto. And you should feel extremely proud of that and thank you very much.
And Councilmember Burt?
Right. Yeah, I'd also like to commend all this work that the Commission's doing and it seems that you're really using this ad hoc committee mechanism to dig deeply into the issues. I guess the, the one thing that I encourage you to look at is how do you make sure that in doing that, there's adequate public ability, the public to participate? So, it's a, it's a balance that I think it's just important to be conscious of. Vice Chair Lawing spoke to the CIP process and it caused me to think about how this might work this year where we, we are potentially going to have a approval of a, a funding amount without the programs at the, the time that we approve our budget. And one of the things that I was thinking is that maybe we, we set up a mechanism where, by it at mid-year or some other check-in point, and not just a check-in, where it would be a formal return to council for approval of the specific projects that would end up being determined after the, the budgetary amount has been approved at the budget adoption time. Second, I also realize that if, if we aren't determining those projects until mid-year, the chances of actually spending those dollars in that fiscal year are pretty slim. So, we, we probably just need to recognize that and, and it suggests to me that we, we may either want to allocate fewer CIP dollars to actually be spent in FY 2016 if, if things are kind of, the longer-term projects are being put on hold until the master plan moves forward more. Because I, or, yeah, that, for the, the FY 16 allocation, just, we should be realistic that we, we, we put in there what we actually intend to spend in that year as opposed to putting it in there with an intention to roll it over to FY 2017. I have no problem looking at, at just identifying what things we'll spend on in 2016 and we put them there and if there's a surplus in the CIP that gets rolled over to 2017 because we'll spend more money in '17, that's okay too. I, I just want to be realistic that we, what we put on paper is close to what we think we'll actually do. Comment on the Sterling Canal. We, we heard that basically there was an interest by both the Commission and the staff for whether any of that fenced-off area could be utilized for other recreational purposes and that our Utilities Department had said, "No." And, and without us really having an understanding of what that, the basis was for that and that at the present time, it's not being utilized for those purposes, they may be correct that, that they do have a genuine long-term need for that. But different departments and agencies tend to love to protect their options and resources and that may not be what we want to do as a city as a whole. So, I'd like to ask if we could hear back from staff through the City Manager, some additional evaluation of what is the Utility Department need for that area and, and is any of it potentially available for recreation purposes? Just quickly, I don't want you to get spending a lot of time on something that has been addressed and that was Councilmember Schmidt's concern over the South Palo Alto canopy. This issue has been looked at previously in the city and the primary two reasons why South Palo Alto has less canopy is because the, the primary public city-owned land that has canopy is parking strips. South Palo Alto is fundamentally designed without parking strips and therefore doesn't have the street trees. If there was an interest in South Palo Alto and neighborhoods to carve out space that may be private space or some other way to establish street trees on streets that were not originally designed for that purpose, then that might be an interesting thing. But barring that, I'm not sure what could be done. The other consideration is simply the age of the community. North Palo Alto is an older community and has an older canopy and more mature. So, those two things combined are the primary explanations of why we have that difference. I think all of us would love to see it expanded throughout the city, but it's not because somebody had a chip against South Palo Alto on this, it's because there were design and age differences. And if we can find up solutions to that, then all the better. On Foothill, the 7.7 acres, I did want to first address this issue of how we might expose the public to it in a limited way. And I think the idea of having a weekend day that's more broadly open with ranger supervision, that's a good thing. As much as I'm probably as anxious as anybody to be able to utilize that acreage, I think the notion of trying to quickly open it to the general public before we have a master plan for it and, and at least a good portion of the construction of that is really premature. It's, it's a dirt area that not much can grow on right now. Now, I agree that it has actually great potential for the future and I really look forward to that. But I don't think that leaping forward to opening that area that, where the hillside has no trails and the, the flatland has no vegetation, kind of, I don't, it doesn't make sense to me on that. But going forward on some of the, the items that were addressed in the report, I, I asked some questions and I really want to thank staff for having some valuable responses in short order. The, somehow the calculation on the acreage that is the flatland looks odd to me. When I look at the map, I looked at, in the staff report and I look on Google Maps and it doesn't look right, that it's only 2.1 acres. Maybe there's something that's an illusion and I'm not getting it, but, but it, it looks close to half of the acreage that's there. So, that would be worthwhile to just see more. There was one thing about the steelhead and the answer was that Fish and Game considers the possible range of migration. I know that creek and I know when it flows and there's no way you're going to have steelhead that are going to be able to habitate upstream. They have to live in the non-rainy season in pools and that creek doesn't run. Yeah. Greg, did you have?
Just, just as an anecdote, every time we stock Beronda Lake with fish, surprisingly, we have to get a special permit from Fish and Game because what we typically stock, like the red-eared sunfish, could somehow escape from Beronda Lake, go down the culvert and somehow get into our creek system and so.
Well, that, that actually, so that's a little different. That actually can happen during the wet season. But steelhead have to be able to survive in the dry season. Yeah. And these, anybody, even right now, we just, we've had two rainfalls, those creeks are bone-dry. And, and a lot of it is because of the nature of the sediment that runs down from those hills. It's that gravelly, it was clay-like gravel and it just, it perks. Yeah. So, I don't think that's an issue. On the other hand, we can even look at our comprehensive plan and we actually have language that talks about the criticality of riparian corridors. And that's where the overwhelming amount of biodiversity and, and biological activity occurs in our, in our region. And unfortunately, at Foothill's Park right now, we have turf that runs right up to Buckeye Creek where it really shouldn't. And so, creating a riparian corridor that's a natural habit, habitat, I think would be a really valuable asset. This additional land that is perhaps poor-quality soil presently, one that there could be cover fill pretty readily that would improve that. But on the other hand, that's a natural meadow and we don't have natural meadows in Foothill Park other than Upper Buckeye, or Wild Horse Valley, I should say. And so, I, I can see this being a really wonderful natural meadow land and rather than try and make it soil that can support trees, you just got lemons, make lemonade. And I also think that the hillsides that the report says are unusable, well, they may be unusable for certain functions, but they're, they're potentially really great for, for trails. And so, I assume that that's being part of the consideration and, and that we'll, we'll look at that. And that includes connectedness to our existing trail system because the trail that loops down to the valley by the ranger station or by the nature center dead ends there. Now, you can see from that trail, you get to see the quarry and if anybody wants to actually be able to see it, that's the one place that you can see into the quarry without breaking any laws is from that trail. I've seen it from more than one location. Let's see. And, and I really would like to discourage consideration of additional turf. I think we have an abundance of turf in Foothill's Park and frankly, we overwater it. I was just up there walking on it a few weeks ago in the middle of the drought and my shoes got soggy because it's just so drenched. It's not just lush, it's overwatered. So, let's not even consider that extension here. So, I would be interested though in whether this public access to it could be in two phases perhaps. There might be a long-term master plan and there might be a nearer-term set of enhancements that would make it available to the public. And so, that's one area that I'd, I'd encourage the Commission and the staff to look at is whether this might be broken up into two phases that, both from a cost and a, a timing standpoint. And have, are we engaging, you know, revegetating this with natural vegetation? This is what Actera is really there for, right? Is to do this and they've been doing a great job in Wild Horse Valley and elsewhere. Are we already talking with them about what it would take for them to participate in something like this?
Yes, staff started those conversations with Actera. They're excited about some of the possibilities, but before they invest too deeply in game planning out, they wanted to see where this goes in terms of the Commission and the council.
Right. And we have to tell them roughly what we're interested in before they can give us a response, but I'm glad that they, they're enthused. Thanks.
Okay, well, I wanted to just thank the Commission for the work on this. It's been an interesting journey learning more and more about the 7.7 acres when it popped up on us a couple of years ago. And I think that it's very fair to explain to the community exactly what it, it's going to take and I think you've done a good articulate job of that and now you have some good ideas to go back and, and consider. I, I think that, I wanted to ask you just one question with the capital improvement. I think, Ed, that was you. Do you need to have any focus from Finance Committee next year for any issues that you're having regarding getting everything executed timely or is this something that you think you've got a strategy for?
I think we're okay on that at this point. Refer to our colleagues on staff.
Okay. Okay. Because.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I could make a general point just in response to the entire study session approach and that sort of thing, particularly with a Commission that's so active and has been so focused in the recommendations you made, I mean, council members have said a lot of different things tonight. Sometimes these things are in the realm of opinion or perspective, but other times they start to be potential directives or requests for more information. There's even sort of policy aspects to these things and I was talking with the Director here, you know, a lot of times we just, I think the council sort of relies on the discretion of the Commission and the staff as to what they're going to assimilate and how it's going to be used. But I think in this case, it would be a good example of how we would formalize as a staff some follow-up. What are issues that might need to be resuscitated at the CIP or the budget process itself or in some other way of ever looping back to the council so we're clear that there's some specific directive as to what we're doing. So, we were thinking along those lines already and again, there was just so much being talked about here. We don't want to necessarily lose it if that's the will of the whole council as to what you want us to do.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to get clear that before we left this evening, I do have two speakers on this. I'm going to go to the speakers and just so you know, it might look like a school board meeting tonight, but we've got a dedication for Dan Dykwell tonight that I would like you to join us for if you don't mind right after this. So, we'll go into that right after this. So, we have two speakers and our first speaker on this topic of the study session with Parks and Rec is Herb Borak to be followed by See Ready.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and a good evening. I have two comments about dog parks. The first. The first is that a few years ago, as part of a capital improvement program for Greer Park, when some fencing around one of the ball fields was included, that I recall that additional fence posts were placed around that ball field for the possibility of completing the fencing if that ball field was used as a multi-use dog park area. So I don't know if the commission aware of that, but I just wanted to remind you. The second is, there were a couple of comments made about the fact that there might have been something in writing for you about the dog parks, and that somehow staff was involved in the fact that the commission didn't provide that to you in writing. And it seems to me, if this is a meeting of the commission and the council, it should not be a staff involvement to decide what pieces of paper you get that are prepared by the commission. At a minimum, I think you should receive whatever the commission had in its packet recently. And if there's something else that had been written, either by its ad hoc committee or commission itself, I think that should also go into your packet now, rather than being delayed. Thank you.
Thank you. And See Ready?
Good evening. I think this is a team of people that have done an excellent job, and I would like to say that. And I think it's all because of the leadership that Greg provides as well. And he's my good friend, so thank you. So I have one thought for all the things that you're thinking about. What about having Foothill Park as like Palo Alto Bowl, like Hollywood Bowl? So we can have concerts and things like that in an open air, annoy our rich neighbors, so we could have country music, all those things. So think about that as a way to enhance our community involvement. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I've asked staff if it's okay for me to make a dedication to a very special Palo Altoan who passed away last Thursday, and his family is here in the audience. And I wanted to read something, and then we're going to see a little video. Dan Dykwell was a friend of Palo Alto. He passed away last Thursday at Stanford Hospital, surrounded by his family. I first met Dan and his wife Sunny while figuring out how to seal the newly resurrected black-and-white ball mass of invitations. The envelopes were formal for the occasion, stiff and hard to fold, sealed, and worse, the best way to do it was to lick them. And that was both distasteful, but necessary. That's when I first ran into the Dykwell-spunk-and-we-can-make-this-happen energy of Dan and Sunny. Their home was always open, just like last Sunday, when I knocked on the door and was warmly invited in, offered a cold drink and goodies, when it was me that was there to comfort and bring good wishes. Indeed, Dan and Sunny have been a dynamic pair who drew people from around town to work together on building our community. Their home was always a warm and welcoming gathering place, and often packed shoulder to shoulder with celebration for a fundraising project, school bond, or parcel tax campaign. Dan believed in Palo Alto and was committed to making our community a better place. He served children and our public schools as president of the district-wide PTA Council. I liked that job the best, Sunny. President of the PaliPTSA, member of the PAUSD Program Review Committee for the 20-year Facilities Master Plan, founding member of Project Safety Net, and fundraising chair to youth community services. In 2009, he received PTA's Golden Oak Award for exemplary service to youth. He also served on the Mid Peninsula Media Center Board, was president of Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce, and a member of the Blue Ribbon Task Force for the Palo Alto Public Safety Building. He also ran with some of us in 2009 for city council. And here is one of his videos that we can all enjoy. His topic is very identifiable.
Hi, I'm Dan Dykwell, and I'm running for the Palo Alto City Council this year. Palo Alto is famous for many things. It's the home of Stanford University, we have nationally-ranked public schools, and it's known as the birthplace of Silicon Valley. But it's also infamous for its bad roads. That's because for decades, the city has focused on providing top-notch services to make Palo Alto the great place it is to live. However, we really have not maintained our infrastructure. Now, the physical infrastructure includes streets, sidewalks, parks, bridges, and public buildings. That has resulted in a backlog of about $450 million of necessary maintenance. And over the next 18 years, the plan shows that we probably have about $150 million of that that is unfunded. In other words, we haven't identified sources of revenue for that yet. So here are some things that I think we could do to rectify this. As a member of the Blue Ribbon Task Force for the Public Safety Building, we examine minimum feasibility requirements, and we need to do that for all public works projects. Next, we need to reexamine budget priorities and reallocate funds so that we can reduce this infrastructure gap. We need to focus on improving our roads, sidewalks, and bike lanes to ensure the safety of our children, seniors, and bicyclists. We need to commit to a long-term capital improvement program that will help us get caught up and stay caught up.
No, we're not going to see any more of those videos. But Dan enjoyed good food, good wine, arts, the Giants, and season tickets to the symphony. Many remember fondly him being the only man in a group of women walking the dish. Most of all, he enjoyed time with family, whether going to movies, playing with grandchildren, or adventures to see various parts of the world. Tonight, I wanted to dedicate this meeting to Dan and his memory. To share this is his wife Sunny, she's right here, and his son Devon. His other son Louis and daughter-in-law Marie, and granddaughters Aubrey and Chloe are home. So thank you, Dan, for sharing Dan with us, Sunny. Palo Alto won't be the same, but wouldn't be what it is today without Dan. I'm going to be very daring and do a five-minute break of this council, and then we have to come back to work. So if you want to take a break and greet people, then we'll be moving back into our meeting.
City Council on this special Palo Alto City Council night, really the first Palo Alto City Council since the election of Tuesday. And we just saw a very special video of Dan Dykwell, who was a dynamic citizen of Palo Alto, who was in the hospital last... We first got the news on election night here, during election night coverage, that he was at Stanford, and things were not going well. And apparently, he did pass, went to his reward on Thursday evening. He's a dynamic guy, and his election, or rather, his campaign to the council in 2009 was quite an impressive campaign. And he was, many thought, to be someone who had a great future, who certainly, if he didn't make it that time, which he didn't, he would run again in several other years coming. But health issues, I guess, took him... The guy was in great shape, looked much younger than he was, just looked incredible. And it's a big shock that he would be taken so young as he was. They talk about him being a grandfather, he's really a very young-looking grandfather. We saw a video of him talking about the issue of traffic and the police building and where he wanted to see improvements made. It was a beautiful, looked like a beautiful summer day there in Palo Alto. He spins around on his bike, very athletic, and tells us what his plans are for the future with Palo Alto. So packed house tonight. It's actually much more packed tonight, much busier atmosphere tonight than it was election night, which kind of turned into a sort of a city council of its own there on election night coverage. But we're ready to get back going. The mayor, keeping it together tonight about Dan Dykwell, took a five-minute break. And what we had prior was a recreation commission and Palo Alto City Council up there, about 18 people out there on the day is tonight. And it's the election, of course, a lot of new people now on the Palo Alto Council. It was quite an earthquake of an election, wide as well. And there are new mayors now in San Jose, in Oakland. There's also, of course, Jerry Brown, an unprecedented fourth term as governor. A landslide blockbuster win nationally for the GOP. They come roaring back. It was like the 49ers yesterday in the football game, really taking the House, which was expected, but expanding their wins in the House and taking the Senate. They now have a huge majority, not since, well, you're looking at the '40s, '40s and '30s, has the Republicans had such representation in Congress now. And so we have a new, well, we have the existing House Majority Leader Boehner, but the new Senate Majority Leader is Mitch McConnell. So the council tonight, it was, we have a big meeting tonight on Veterans Night as well. They're going to do a little thing, a salute of veterans. Tomorrow night on HBO, there's a salute to American veterans. It's being sponsored by Starbucks, and Howard Schultz of Starbucks, who's put out a thing about, a little book about veterans. There's also been a great program in the Palo Alto libraries about veterans. And you don't hear a lot about veterans. We did a show in Memorial Day, around Memorial Day, with, I got to interview some veterans. And tomorrow night is a very special night at Stanford. They're having a special night of music about World War I. And we're going to give you some information on that. But the Palo Alto City Council is certainly changing, and we have new people on the school board, as well as in the Palo Alto City Council. It was quite a night, and there are still some races that have yet to be decided. So we're going to get into all of that as we roll along here on tonight, which is a big night. We're going to have a partner presentation between Palo Alto Library and the Palo Alto Arts Center for veteran audiences. We're also going to have appointments of candidates for the Architectural Review Board, the Historic Resources Board, the Planning and Transportation Commission. We have a consent calendar item, which there's several items that can be removed. We have quite a large consent list tonight. We do have three, we have a public hearing, resolution adopting the 2015-2023 Housing Element of the Comprehensive Plan, and associated mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring program. We also have approval of a letter of intent for construction and operation of the new Junior Museum and Zoo Building by the Friends of the Junior Museum and Zoo in 2019. We also have the approval of a two-year contract with Flint Strategies for the Communications and Outreach Contract to support our Palo Alto Initiative and Planning and Community Environment Department at a cost not to exceed $175,000. That's continued from October 27, 2014. Review of the City Hall Remodel Project, and that comes from October 20. And there is a closed session tonight. They're going to discuss litigation relating to Mitchell Park and the community center construction. Among the items that can be taken off, that can become items tonight from the consent calendar is a recommendation to release agenda packets one week earlier and make other conforming changes. Finance recommendation to approve design guidelines for 2014 water utility drought rate costs and service study. Finance committee's approval of staff's second follow-up for inventory management audit. Adoption of a resolution summarily vacating a public easement which was relocated at 1050 Page Mill Road. Denial of a historic designation request for the Palo Alto Little League site at 3672 Middlefield Road. Adoption of a resolution concurring with the city of Menlo Park for the naming the Mike Harding Pedestrian Bicycle Bridge at San Mateo Drive, and that's in Menlo Park. Item number seven is the approval with concern, EAP, for the city of Palo Alto's Employee Assisted Plan in the amount of $2,800.60 per month, no, $2,800 per month for 60 months, for a total amount not to exceed $168,036. Approval of a public-private partnership agreement between the city of Palo Alto and the Palo Alto players for cooperative use of Lucy Stern Center. Approval of the renewal of the public-private partnership between the city of Palo Alto and West Bay Opera for the use of Lucy Stern Community Center. A three-year contract with Downtown Streets Incorporated, not to exceed $470,000 for maintenance services of the city's five downtown parking garages, downtown sidewalks, alleys, Litten and Cogswell Plaza, the Stanford Palo Alto playing fields, and the Old Community Garden, and provide outreach case management services to the downtown core with the intent of linking homeless individuals to the community and housing services. Approval of a blanket purchase order with TNT Enterprises in the amount not to exceed $2,407,850 to be the primary supplier of new construction materials and haul away of construction debris from the municipal service center to off-site recycling and disposal for the utilities, community services, and public works department for the three-year period from October 27, 2014 through October 26, 2017. Approval of number C15153692 with RMC Water and Environment in a total not to exceed $4,357,899 to provide program management for services for projects under the Long Range Facility Plan for the Regional Water Quality Control Plant. $280 for the 2015 Go-Pass Program. Approval of C155378 with Corolla Engineers, PC, in a total amount not to exceed $291,335 to provide design services for old pumping plant rehabilitation at Regional Water Quality Control Plant. That's Capital Improvement Program Project, WQ80021. Approval of the submission of the National Endowment for the Arts, our town grant application. So that is where we are. We are still on a break, and we are going to be taking a look at what is up and coming with the Palo Alto City Council. We have a broadcast next week is... week, uh, is, uh, November seventeenth, uh, there's a, uh, and then seven PM. Then we have no broadcast, that's final Monday in November, that's the Monday of Thanksgiving. Then we're back Monday, December the first for the council, and then we are back on Monday, December eighth for the council. And that is, will take us as we come close now to the end of the year. And there's a new majority in town. It was a victory by slow-growth proponents that won the seats on the council. And also, the council is gonna go from nine, from your starting nine, to seven. That's right. They, uh, it was a dream. Uh, Measure D, uh, did pass, so, um, that is gonna change Palo Alto, certainly, uh, the way we look at a lot of things. Uh, there'll be, there'll be less, uh, uh, will, 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 will the meetings go shorter or will the council members just talk more? Well, that was a dream of former Mayor, uh, Gary Fazino, and that came true. Roger Smith leading the way on that, increasing productivity efficiency by reducing the Palo Alto City Council from nine to seven. So, that was a big win for him and, uh, uh, the council, um, uh, has, uh, will change, certainly in the future. So, uh, the voters said yes. They said yes to a smaller council. Uh, and, uh, uh, it, this is from, uh, Jay Shiner from the Palo Alto Weekly. Palo Alto's of, uh, voters agreed to reduce the size of their city council from nine to seven when they passed Measure D with eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three votes counted and, uh, six thousand four hundred and sixteen were in support of the measure, five thousand four sixty-seven were against it. And that change will take in, take in effect in twenty eighteen. So, the idea of shrinking council size has been floating around for years before it finally landed the ballot. Uh, to a five-four council vote in June, championed by longtime community volunteer Roger Smith, it had won the support of dozens of past council members, neighborhood leaders, and state representatives. Former Mayor Sidespanosa Peter Dreckmeyer, Judy Kleimberg, and Joe Semini all endorsed it, as did council member Larry Klein and Vice Mayor Liz Neff. I know Vic O'Jekian came on my show and he was, uh, he was opposed to it, but, uh, uh, reducing the size proponents maintain would bring efficiency to council meetings and align Palo Alto's council size with governing bodies in, uh, communities of smaller size. Mountainlo Park in Palo Alto, for example, have five council seats while Mountain View and Sunnyvale have seven. Smith told the Weekly he was very pleased with the results, even as he acknowledged that there are many votes left to count. People under, understand that this will save time, effort, and money. Uh, my hope is to, uh, staff, uh, that it'll make staff more effective. I've never talked to someone who prefers to have nine bosses to seven bosses. Uh, John Frederick, a council candidate who opposed Measure D, said Tuesday he was on the side that promotes representation and democracy. I know that was also a point that, um, Councilmember Schmidt, uh, said that to make it more democratic, that there are people who, uh, if you have nine, uh, if you have seven, there are less people who could serve, which is sort of obvious, but, uh, uh, but you could always have those two more people, the, those two more activists and, and special things that make Palo Alto special. But seven is, is it, uh, seven heaven? I guess that's where the council is going. They went from the starting nine to seven heaven, and that's where we're going with the council. I think we might be coming back, uh, for more, but, uh, the council now has been reduced. That won't happen till twenty eighteen, though, so we'll still have nine. Looking fine. I'm Vince Larkin. This is KZSU Stanford.
Palo Alto Arts Center for Veteran Audiences. Good evening. I'm Raina Halper, an Assistant Director for the Community Services Department. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um, we have found that the expressive arts and community-based programs for veterans are very important. In honor of Veterans Day, to showcase collaborations between the Palo Alto Library and the Arts Center, uh, we, an increased understanding of the experiences of veterans returning from sort, service, we have a presentation for you. Tonight, uh, we will be featuring how the current Heart of a Soldier program builds off of previous programs for veterans as well as draws attention to the need for future programs and service. I'm gonna now turn it over to Karen Kenzel, Director of the Arts Center.
Thank you, Raina, and good evening, council members. As an arts center committed to serving the broad diversity of our community, the Palo Alto Arts Center has a tradition of working with veterans. I'd like to highlight a few examples tonight, first showcasing some past work and then showcasing a current collaboration with the Palo Alto Library. So, in two thousand and twelve, the Palo Alto Arts Center opened the Community Creates Exhibition, which was our grand reopening exhibition. And in that show, we worked with Menlo Park-based artist Lava Thomas on a veterans' project in which she interviewed local veterans extensively, did these amazingly detailed portraits, and then framed those portraits with a statement by each veteran in their own hand about how their service impacted them. She also included photographs that the veterans selected about their service to show with the portraits. Then, just this summer, thanks to a grant from the Creative Work Fund, we invited Berkeley-based ceramic artist and veteran to the Arts Center, Aaron Tool, and we set up a ceramic studio for him in our gallery, um, where for three weeks he made more than eight hundred cups, um, out of clay and engaged with the community. The cups were fired and glazed on-site, and many of the cups actually featured images and objects that related to the service of local veterans. After the cups were produced, more than eight hundred of them, they were put on display in an exhibition, and then in a culminating Community Day celebration, the cups were distributed to community members. And this is an important part of Aaron Tool's work. All the cups he makes, he gives away. The cups are intended to be a catalyst for dialogue about war and the veteran experience. I should mention that Aaron is the subject of a nationally syndicated NPR, excuse me, PBS television show called Craft in America. The first episode premiered this last weekend, focused on service, and it featured several craft artists who are veterans, including Aaron Tool. At that same Community Day celebration when the cups were distributed, we featured a panel discussion with local veteran artists, as well as a workshop with San Francisco-based Combat Paper, which is an artist collaborative that worked closely with veterans to transform their military uniforms into paper. This whole project was very meaningful for our audiences. This is one quote from an exhibition visitor who was profoundly affected by the Aaron Tool exhibition. I would now like to turn it over to my colleague, Lori Hastings, from the Palo Alto Library, to talk about our current collaboration with veterans.
I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to talk about the library's endeavor in working with veterans. This is the first time we have really reached out to this group. We applied for and received a grant from Cal Humanities on the theme of War Comes Home. This is a Community Reads grant, the purpose of which was really twofold. One was to increase, uh, public understanding, uh, and empathy towards the experience of veterans returning from conflict, and the other is to try to create dialogue between, uh, veterans and civilians in order to, uh, make, help veterans, um, interweave back into the community upon return from service. The centerpiece of this, uh, Community Reads was What It Is Like to Go to War by Carl Marlantes. He's a Rhodes Scholar, a Yale graduate, and a, uh, a marine veteran from the Vietnam conflict. Uh, he, he came and he spoke, uh, as part of, uh, many of the programs that the library has been offering over, since September. Um, as part of all of the programming that we've been offering, including book discussions, civic conversations, um, family book discussions, um, we've also been focusing on having special programming for, for veterans, including a two-day photography workshop. That was a collaboration with the, the Arts Center. Uh, we brought in a professional photographer to work with veterans, um, and this went on for two Saturdays during the month of October. And the result of that, uh, that was a collaboration with the folks over at the Menlo Park VA facility. Um, and you can see, uh, in this photograph, um, Conrad working with, with the veterans. The result of their, uh, work with Conrad, the photographer, was the, um, Community Day Celebration in honor of Veterans Day that happened yesterday at the Arts Center. It's called Heart of the Soldier, and it was an exhibition of their photographs, uh, that was, that was on view for the first time yesterday and will be on view at the Arts Center through November thirtieth. And th- these photographs speak to their experiences, their profound experiences, um, as, uh, in terms of service to their country and their return home to their community. So, I do recommend that everybody go down and take a look because it really is, um, a very moving exhibit. One of our participants was, uh, this is his photograph, the Heart of a Soldier, and, um, he also participated in a writing workshop that we also offered for veterans. And, uh, you can see, um, a very profound, "The Last Stands the Reads, the Heart of the Soldier Has a Hole, But It Doesn't Diminish the Dance With Life." And I have to say that this was a, a unique experience for me personally, working with veterans, and I found it to be, um, very profound, and I really appreciated the opportunity to work on this grant and to gain great, greater understanding. So, here we have a photo. Um, you can see some of the participants here and some photos in the background. Uh, we had veterans from Iraq or, uh, Afghanistan, all the way back to Korea and Vietnam. And we had some young people, too. And here's a quote from one of our participants of Heart, Heart of the Soldier. "I'm very grateful for the opportunity to reach the community with a unique experience for sharing my story. I feel special." That's really nice. And, uh, this is Yacina, one of our participants.
So, that's the end of our presentation. We want to thank you for letting us, uh, talk about Veterans Day a little bit. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and that's tomorrow, right, Veterans Day?
Right.
Okay, so, um, it's good timing. Uh, Councilmember Price.
Uh, I wanted to thank very much the Arts Center, the Arts Center Foundation, and the library staff for their very innovative and creative work in, uh, these community events. I did have the pleasure of talking to Aaron Tool, the ceramicist. I, I am a proud owner of one of his cups in my study, and, um, also, the Combat Paper Program was very well done. And I think what's, uh, really important about this is the, the experience of conflict, the experience of surviving war or experiencing the outcome of that, uh, and then parallel with the artistic expression and a different way of, you know, expressing one's feelings, thoughts, and views of the world. It's a really exciting program, and I commend all of you for your work. And the artists, uh, that have participated are really fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, we're gonna move on to, uh, appointments to candidates, the Architectural Review Board, and the Planning and Transportation Commission, and Councilmember Holman, you'd like to speak to the HRB.
Uh, yes, I spoke with both the clerk earlier today and, uh, also city attorney about, um, how we might forward a little bit of a different process than what sometimes we do here. And that is to be able to talk about the, the whys for, uh, the different, um, applicants for the HRB in this particular case, and wonder if the city attorney might like to make a couple of comments about that process?
Sure, happy to do that, Councilmember Holman. So, uh, the question, Councilmember Holman's question was, um, uh, whether it was possible for the council to have a general discussion about either, um, it, it's priorities and direction on making appointments or on specific applications, and, um, council members' views as to, um, appropriate appointments to make. And, um, either of those is permissible under this agenda item. Um, it's my understanding that perhaps in, in prior years, council members did have more of an open discussion, and in recently, the tradition has been, um, to do just a simple and straightforward, you know, going right into voting, and that's also permissible. But, uh, the item is agendized, you know, for the council's consideration, and if council members are interested in having a general discussion and exchange of views, that's also permissible.
So, um, we can do a couple of different things. We can go ahead and have the clerk pick up the, uh, the Planning Commission and ARB ballots if we finish those, um, and call those out, or I can make the comments now that I would like to start the discussion at HRB.
You want to speak to the HRB appointments, is that correct?
Yes.
The Historic Resources Board? Okay. I do have one speaker on this item, so I'm gonna go out to the public-
Okay, sure.
And then we can come back and bring it back to council. Um, see, ready? You have three minutes to speak on our appointment process for these three appointments. Is this, you look a little surprised. This is item number three?
I'm sorry, I, I'm not speaking on that. No, it's not, it's not my intent to speak on that.
Okay. I have this card. You don't want to speak on it?
Uh, I have something else. I'll work with them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. In that case, um, why don't you go ahead and speak to the Historic Resources Board and your comments on that?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, while I think institutional memory is, um, unmistakably an asset to have, um, I think also there are times to maybe, uh, look at recommitting and, uh, refreshing, uh, a board or commission. In this case, I think the, the HRB. Uh, we have a couple of commissioners who, or board members, I should say, who have served, um, for, one for twenty years, one for, I think, sixteen years. And I think, um, as I do watch some of the, uh, board members and board meetings and commission meetings and a variety of those, um, it seems to me that this would be a good time, a good juncture to, uh, refresh that, that board. So, from my own, uh, my own persuasions, I am supportive of two candidates for the four open seats. I'm supportive of McKinnon and Wimmer. Uh, Wimmer is fairly new on the, uh, board, and I think should be given, uh, ample opportunity to, uh, to serve and to prove service. And Mike McKinnon has a very specific, uh, and broad, uh, very broad, um, uh, application to fulfill the obligations of the board set out in the, um, municipal code. Also, in speaking with, uh, Mr. McKinnon, um, uh, I know that he's also interested in being more, uh, creative and, uh, proactive in, um, in serving on that board. So, I support those two candidates, and then beyond that, would ask that the, um, uh, council support a motion to go out, to reopen the, uh, application process, to fill the other two seats.
So, you're making a motion to go out for the application process. I'm gonna need to hear a second?
Well, what I'd like to do is, is I'm, I'm supporting two candidates, and it seems to me, 'cause I want to show, I don't want to show that, for my per, my personal purposes, I don't want to show that there's no support for any of the applications. Uh, so, we can, we can vote ahead, and then if we don't reach a conclusion, then we can go out and reopen the, uh, application process.
Well, typically, we vote with our individual ballots, and then if we have five votes, that person is seated. So, what are you, are you asking to do something different tonight?
What I would suggest is we vote, 'cause council members may or may not agree with me about reopening the process. So, I've stated who-
So, you want to do a motion? Is that what you're, I'm sorry, Karen?
I was thinking that what we could do, we could do it any number of ways, but I was thinking that we would go ahead and vote and see, um, or just go ahead and reopen. But I don't want to show a lack of support for all of the applications. That's what I'm, that's what I'm concerned about.
I don't mean to sound thick, but I'm not, when you say we can go ahead and vote, so you want us to go ahead and have the ballots sent out to all of us and we'll vote for that commission? Or did you want us, or did you want a second-tier motion to go out and redo the processes?
If there is a better way, maybe the city attorney can help with this, if there is a better way, um, than just reopening the application process without voting, without demonstrating that we have no support at council for any of the applicants, that's what I do, I do not want to discourage, uh, all of the current applicants. That's what my concern is. Which, which in that case would mean that we would vote for those applicants ahead of time. And then if we do not reach conclusion, then we reopen. Maybe other candidates, council members would have other thoughts.
I'm gonna go ahead to other council members. There is no motion at this point, even though you did make one, but I didn't get a second. So, I'm gonna go out to Councilmember Burt.
Well, I think it would be confusing to, um, to have a vote and go out to reopen. Um, and I think that if, if the council is interested in, uh, interviewing- And I think that if the council is interested in interviewing additional candidates, we've done that many times, and we've also, at the conclusion of that, selected some of the candidates who have already been interviewed. So I wouldn't view this as a prejudging of the, of who we might end up supporting. I think that the candidates with deep experience do in fact have a great knowledge and commitment and at the same time, we do benefit from having new members come on boards and commissions and having a broad candidate pool. So I would, I'll move that we reopen the interview process for HRB.
All right. That's been moved to reopen the interview process for HRB, seconded by Councilmember Schmidt. Would you like to speak further to your motion?
No, I've spoken.
All right. Councilmember Schmidt, would you like to speak to your motion?
I was struck. We have three boards or commissions we're looking at and we have, on the others, a total of four seats open and there's four candidates for each one of the open seats, which gives us an opportunity to reach out to the public, hear different perspectives, points of view on what we want on those boards and commissions. On this particular one, we have four seats open and only five candidates. And the, four of the five candidates are incumbents, which is a large number of incumbents to have. Seems to me it would make sense to go out to the public and maybe at the same time the council should ask the question, why is it that we don't have fresh, new candidates for this? Is there something in the way we have articulated the role of this committee that is not reaching out to the public and making an impact? So I think maybe to stand back for a minute and think a little bit about whether we need as a council to go out and help identify for the public why this is an important role and hopefully get a broader set of applications.
Councilmember Klein.
I will be voting no on this, even though I agree with Councilmember Holman that you need to turn over membership in commissions from time to time and this one probably has more years of service than any of your other, any of our other commissions by far. But I think there's a real reason why we don't have more applicants. We have never had applicants for the HRB and that is we place very strict requirements on who can be on the HRB. And I think if we're going to change anything, you're going to need to change what our rules are as to who can be on the HRB. I'm going to vote no because I don't think until the council does that, we should give assignments to staff that are fruitless. I think they've got enough to do rather than trying to chase up applicants when it's been years and years since we had more than one or two applicants for an HRB position. So, that's my views.
Councilmember Berman?
So it's been noted that we had more applicants for other commissions than we did for HRB. So I want to ask the city clerk's office, did you guys do anything different in soliciting applicants to the HRB than you did for the ARB or the PTC?
No, we did the same for all. We did outreach through the neighbor, through the newspapers, through neighborhood associations and other devices that we use.
Great. And that seemed to generate a lot of applications for some of the commissions. And I think to Councilmember Klein's point, I don't think the staff outreach or efforts was the reason why we didn't have a lot of applications to the HRB. I think we have remarkably strong applicants to the HRB and I'm going to vote no on the motion.
Councilmember Holman?
Just quickly, that I will support the motion with the understanding that it is not a rejection of all candidates and the qualifications for the HRB range as broadly as an owner of an historic home and those who have some experience and expertise in history. It's not all just the Secretary of Standards.
Councilmember Scharf?
I'm also going to vote no for similar reasons to Councilmember Klein, but I do think that raises some broad policy issues that we should send to Policy and Services about how many terms you can serve on a board and commission, what the requirement should be, some of these. And I think it cuts across more than the HRB frankly. I think there's some ARB issues about what the qualification should be, Palo Alto residency. So I think that we should, at some point, send this to Policy and Services and take a good look. And I think it would be unfair to the candidates to say, you know, and I think, I agree with Councilmember Berman, I think we have supremely well-qualified candidates for this who've put in a lot of service and if the issue is turnover, we should say upfront as a policy decision, you can only serve so many terms.
Councilmember Price?
I will not be supporting the motion. I concur with the vast majority of the comments made by my colleagues earlier. I think we have some very talented and committed members of HRB now and those are my points.
I want to just do a check to, we do have Liz on the phone, is that correct? Vice Mayor Niss?
No, she wanted to be called when we do the Plan and Transportation Commission votes.
Okay. Thank you. In that case-
Well, haven't we just done that?
No, we haven't voted. She hasn't reported out. I'm going to go ahead and make my comments on this motion. City manager, did you want to say something?
I'll wait till you're done.
All right. I know that we just went through a long process of redoing the commission applications and we've changed the applications a little bit. We've, we're recruiting all year long and I agree with the comments that have been made before. I have never seen a vast herd to get on the Historic Resources Board. I think that we could try to change that experience. And yet, at the same time, we didn't ever indicate to the applicants that we would change the process the night we were going to go to vote. And I do find that to be troubling, to kind of shift that. We, I think it's a little disingenuous to people when they apply for something. They need to have the certainty that we'll follow through on our process. And I'm planning on going ahead and reappointing these four commissioners. So I'm, I don't mind reopening this at some point, but I think it does need to be referred in the normal channel, so I will be voting no. Go ahead, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I haven't been counting where the votes are going, so my comments are just open-ended. One, I didn't hear that there was a time limit that was attached to the motion for what it's worth. And then, secondly, my understanding is I think that the folks on the HRB might be in a holding, sort of holdover status already. So if the motion does pass, I mean, I just think it needs to be clear that you'd be asking incumbents to continue to serve, obviously.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. And that motion fails with Councilmember Holman, Burt, and Schmidt voting yes. And Vice Mayor Niss absent. I'm going to ask the clerk to hand out the ballots for the HRB. And do we have any announcements for any of the commissions?
I do. For the Architectural Review Board, we will have to do a second ballot, but looking at the first, Council Berman voted for Matthew Harris and Kai Young Kim. Councilmember Burt voted for Catherine Ballantyne and Kenneth Hu. Councilmember Holman for Catherine Ballantyne and Kenneth Hu. Councilmember Klein for Catherine Ballantyne and Kai Kim. Vice Mayor Niss not here. Councilmember Price voting for Matthew Harris and Kai Kim. Councilmember Scharf for Matthew Harris. Oops. I'll have to get back to Scharf. Councilmember Schmidt to Catherine Ballantyne. Let me look at these again.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Who?
That Liz wanted to participate in the voting.
Yeah. Thank you.
It violates our policies.
What?
Continuing, Councilmember Scharf voted for Matthew Harris and Kai Kim. Councilmember Schmidt for Catherine Ballantyne and Kenneth Hu. And Mayor Shepherd for Catherine Ballantyne and Richard Sholerman. So we have Catherine Ballantyne with five votes.
I got you here.
So we will have to do a second one. Matthew Harris got three, Kenneth Hu for three, Kai Young Kim four, and Richard Sholerman one. Mayor Shepherd.
Because we had, one is awarded.
It was our understanding that Vice Mayor Niss wanted to vote on just the one, but she just advised us that she wants to vote on all three.
That's fine. So she should just stay on the phone right now?
Yes.
Yeah. And I think you want to have some way where can't you amplify the phone so that the whole council can hear?
Liz?
Uh huh.
And can she do a voice count on this one?
I'm here.
Okay. Let's see if we, go ahead.
All right. If I'm voting for ARB, where are you first? ARB?
ARB.
Okay. I would have voted for Ballantyne and Kim.
Ballantyne is very young. Mayor Shepherd, that would have given Catherine Ballantyne six and Kai Young Kim five.
Okay. When you say would have, does that mean that we're going to accept this as the final vote and both of these applicants have been awarded a position on this commission?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're good.
Okay. Then do we have anything to announce on Plan and Transportation?
Are you voting on Transportation now?
Guys, what is yours for Plan and Transportation?
My first, my first round is Downing and Fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Shepherd, if you want to continue, then as I do the ballots and we get the final, I can, we can come back.
I'm sorry. So, okay, so you're going to, for Plan and Transportation, you're not ready to report out. Okay. So we will move on in the agenda. Thank you. So, agenda, excuse me, agenda changes, additions and deletions. I have none. So, city man, yes?
So, I think the council took a vote on the HRB process, but not on the HRB candidates since the-
They're counting them.
Oh, the HRB also?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So we are now, they're going to interrupt us or after you do city manager comments, that's where I am on the agenda. So, you're up.
City manager comments, items to report, so you don't have to rush there, Beth. This Thursday and Friday off city, Palo Alto firefighters will be, quote, "filling the boot," unquote, to support local families with muscle disease. Firefighters will be at Embarcadero and El Camino during the mornings on November 13th and 14th to gather donations on behalf of over 5,000 local families served by the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Tomorrow night, November 11th, Personal Emergency Preparedness and Crime Watch meeting from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Friends Meeting Hall at 957 Colorado Avenue. City Public Safety staff will present the ever-popular Personal Emergency Preparedness and Crime Prevention Class for the general public. And this is an important topic for all community members, considering the recent Napa earthquake and as different trends occur often during, increase during the holiday season. Learn more by going to City of Palo Alto website forward slash preparedness. Also, despite the drought, Palo Alto does remain at risk from flooding and other problems associated with winter storms should they materialize this year. And it is time to prepare by following steps listed on the flood information and winter storms tab at the City Palo Alto website forward slash public safety. Note that filled-it-yourself sandbags will be available starting next week at the sites listed on the map, except for the Palo Alto Airport site, which will start to have filled bags available in early December. The, an update on the comprehensive plan update schedule, the two-part discussion that the city council began on November 3rd, your last meeting, about the comprehensive plan update process and potential related zoning changes was originally scheduled to continue on November 17th and that date was included in the agenda language. Staff would like the council, obviously, but the public most importantly, to be aware that discussion will not be heard on November 17th and is being rescheduled to December 15th. The meeting has, has been rescheduled at the request of council members who will be unavailable at the November 17th meeting and the December 1st and the December 8th agendas are already quite full. There are three different community meetings coming up this week and next related to transportation issues. First, on Wednesday, November 12th, city staff will host a meeting at Hoover School about the Charleston-Rastradero Road Corridor Project. Second, on Tuesday, November 18th, staff will host a meeting at the Green Meadow Community Room about a subset of the bicycle projects that are currently in the planning stages, including the Middlefield Road Enhanced Bike Way, Charleston Road to South City Limits, the Montrose Avenue Bicycle Boulevard, Charleston Road to Middlefield Road, and the Coverley Community Center Bicycle Route Trail, the San Antonio Road Avenue Enhanced Bike Way, that's at East Bay Shore Boulevard to Alma Street, and the Alma Street-Christen Road to San Antonio Avenue Project. Finally, on Wednesday, November 19th, county planners will be hosting a meeting at the Terman Middle School related to the county's expressway plan for the year 2040. Potential projects included in the county's plan include grade separation concepts for Foothill Expressway and Arastradero Road, a close look at Page Mill Road from I-280 to Alma Street, and concepts for the Page Mill and I-280 interchange. All three meetings will start at 6:30 p.m. As part of its, a different topic, as part of its update to its Sustainability and Climate Action Plan, city is hosting an interactive ideas expo on Tuesday, November 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the downtown library and invite the community to come to this workshop with bold ideas to advance our sustainability goals. The ideas expo is designed to be an interactive event and to introduce the Climate Action Plan, highlight best global practices and municipal advancements in sustainability, and to generate some new ideas in advance of the council work session on December 1st on the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan update. So, more information can be found at the City of Palo Alto website at services forward slash sustainability. Another subject, this Thursday, November 13th, local officials and industry leaders will commemorate the completion of a new landfill gas-to-energy project in San Joaquin County. Our city has partnered with Amoresco to purchase electricity generated through landfill gas capture at the Foothills landfill facility. The Foothills project will generate 4.3 megawatts of electricity, which is enough to serve about 3% of the entire city's electrical usage and provide clean power for nearly- to serve about 3% of the entire city's electrical usage and provide clean power for nearly 3,000 homes each year. The project is one way this Palo Alto is demonstrating its commitment to invest in clean energy resources and achieve its climate protection goals, and I think Mayor Shepard is willing to make the trek there to help cut the ribbon in celebration of another successful milestone in the city's work towards further reducing its carbon footprint. This Wednesday, the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board, who we've had some ongoing challenges with of late, on a different subject, will be honoring our own Phil Bobel. Phil is being awarded the 2014 Dr. Tang Chung Wu Pollution Prevention Award for his lifetime achievements in pollution prevention. The award recognizes Phil's 43 years of work in to protect the environment, including 25 years here with Palo Alto, as well as his leadership in public education and documented reductions in water pollutants. Over the years, Phil has led numerous award-winning programs, as you know, regionally and for Palo Alto, including our Clean Bay Business Program, the Our Water Our World Program, and the Brake Pad Partnership. The New Mitchell Park Library and Community Center successfully opened its doors to the public on November, Thursday, November 6th. The library's been very popular with the community, and as of Sunday, the library had circulated more than 8,000 items and has signed up more than 200 new library card members. And in celebration of the opening, the library and community center wished to invite everyone for festivities that will begin on December 6th, and with planned events to last over the next five weeks. And just in case there's ever a future Palo Alto Jeopardy trivia game, if you want to know who checked out the first books at the Mitchell Park Library, believe it or not, our Assistant Public Works Director Brad Eggleston, who checked out The Best American Short Stories 2014, edited by Jennifer Egan, and true to his creative engineering mindset, The Wind Up Bird Chronicle by Haruki Murakami. Congratulations, that's all I have to report.
That's a mouthful. Okay, we do have some report out on more commissions.
So first, I'm going to check in with Vice Mayor Niss to get her votes for the HRB.
I'm on the line.
Okay, so HRB, what is your vote?
My vote is for all the incumbents.
Thank you, and then give us one moment, and we'll have a final tally on all of the boards and commissions.
Okay, how is your, is Planning and Transportation done?
Planning and Transportation is done, and we're going to report on it, out on that momentarily.
Okay.
So for Historic Resources Board, Councilmember Berman voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Burt voting for Martin Bernstein, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Holman voting for Michael McKinnon, Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Klein voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, Margaret Wimmer. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Price voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Scharf voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, Margaret Wimmer. Councilmember Schmidt voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. Mayor Shepard voting for Martin Bernstein, Roger Kohler, Michael McKinnon, and Margaret Wimmer. The four incumbents were voted in, Martin Bernstein with eight votes, Roger Kohler with seven, Michael McKinnon with nine, and Margaret Wimmer with nine. On the Planning and Transportation Commission, we will have to do a second vote. We do have Councilmember Berman voting for Yekaterina Downing and Adrian Fine. Councilmember Burt voting for Arthur Keller and Asher Waldvogel. Councilmember Holman voting for Arthur Keller and Asher Waldvogel. Councilmember Klein voting for Yekaterina Downing. Adrian Fine. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Yekaterina Downing and Adrian Fine. Councilmember Price voting for Yekaterina Downing and Adrian Fine. Councilmember Scharf for Yekaterina Downing and Asher Waldvogel. Councilmember Schmidt voting for Arthur Keller and Asher Waldvogel. Mayor Shepard voting for Yekaterina Downing and James Schmidt. So, Yekaterina Downing received six votes, Adrian Fine four votes, Arthur Keller three, James Schmidt one, and Asher Waldvogel four.
So now you want us to vote for one more on Plan and Transportation, is that correct?
Not the top.
That's correct.
And we are going to strike through Kate Downing?
Yes.
Would you like us to continue with the meeting? I think...
This should just take a minute.
Or ARB, are we finished?
Yes.
Yes, we are, okay, so it's just this, okay.
I'm going to vote for Fine again. Go back on holes or whatever.
It's going to take us approximately one minute to do the tally.
Good.
Mayor, we do have the votes returned. We have Councilmember Berman voting for Adrian Fine. Councilmember Burt voting for Arthur Keller. Councilmember Holman for Arthur Keller. Councilmember Klein for Adrian Fine. Vice Mayor Niss voting for Adrian Fine. Councilmember Price for Adrian Fine. Councilmember Scharf for Asher Waldvogel. Councilmember Schmidt for Arthur Keller, and Mayor Shepard for Adrian Fine. Adrian Fine has five votes.
Thank you. And so... Yeah, and we are finished with our commissions. Okay, now I need, oh, I'm sorry, we are at Oral Communications, and I have no cards up here for oral communication, but I think you've been giving them. This is a portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on any item not on the agenda. We have a number of them. Our first speaker will be Harlan Pinto, to be followed by Roger Smith.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I come tonight to inform you about the current implementation of the no overnight parking regulations on University Avenue, and to clarify your intent with city staff and the neighborhood. On October 6th, the council approved the extension of the no overnight parking regulations to include University Avenue to Lincoln Avenue segment and other impacted streets in Crescent Park. This extension is a partial solution to the overflow parking from the woodland neighborhood in East Palo Alto to residential streets in Palo Alto that first affected the area around Newell and Edgewood Roads. That parking problem migrated to University Avenue as predicted by neighborhood residents over one year ago. My and other residents' requests to be included in the initial program from the outset were rejected by city staff. I thank the city staff for developing and the council for approving this extension. Nevertheless, I come tonight to report that staff has prepared a petition that includes only the north side of University Avenue, and in discussions via email, they want to specifically exclude the south side of University Avenue from the process at this time. Those of us in the neighborhood know that because parking is permitted on the south side from 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. and on weekends, the cars from East Palo Alto will simply move to the south side, and we will have to go through this all over again. Imagine yourself as a resident of the south side of the street and having to endure this problem all over again. Your action on October the 6th authorized the inclusion of the entire university from Crescent to Lincoln, and so we would like the council to clarify your action and instructions to staff on this matter. It's important to know that Jaime Rodriguez proposed complete elimination of parking on the south side of University Avenue at the Crescent Park Annual Meeting this summer, and received negative feedback at that meeting. This staff action, preparing and delivering to residents a petition for the north side of the street and excluding residents on the south side of the street, is contributing to a climate of mistrust in the relationship between city residents and city staff. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Process matters, and I hope you can clarify the council's intent as soon as possible.
Thank you. Roger Smith to be followed by Dr. Martel.
We've just got through a long election cycle, and I learned three things that I think are important. Number one, I had not walked precincts before, and in South Palo Alto, it seemed like every third house had not an address, either on the curb or on the building. And so I'm hopeful, I haven't talked to Annette yet, I'm hopeful the Fire Department and the Police Department can find the houses. It was really surprising to me and sort of scary. Second of all, it was very disappointing to me in a city like ours with very educated and involved citizens, that we would have, what, less than 50% of the people vote? And that, that is not a message that I think we want to give to our children, and I'm not sure what we can do about it. The third thing is Sid Espinoza here in the council chambers had all the city council people here, all 12 of them, candidates, and he gave them one minute to give their whole campaign session. So if they could do that in one minute, I would encourage you all to think about giving us the public two minutes rather than three minutes, and that would save a number of minutes. Then, the other thing I wanted to thank, I want to thank Mayor Shepard, Councilmember Price, Councilmember Niss, for a colleague's memo, what, a year and a half ago, to, part of which was to reduce his council size from nine to seven. And the Policy and Service Committee brought that to the whole council, and it squeaked by by five to four, and I want to thank those five folks. I think Mark, really, Mark mentioned something Palo Alto's special, but he didn't think we were that special, maybe we ought to put it on the ballot. I think Gail mentioned, why don't we put it on the ballot to prevent folks from having to get 2,500 or 3,000 signatures, which I am very happy we didn't have to do that. And I think Larry really summed it up, he says, we've been talking about this for a number of years, let's put it on the ballot and let's the voters decide. And it looks like the voters have decided, some 10,000 saying we ought to do it. And so I'm now just very pleased with that, but thank you very much for having the courage to put it on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Martel, you will have three minutes to be followed by Mike Francois.
Hello, council, I'm Danielle Martel, and I'm here tonight to speak on the gap between Palo Alto's city government and its support of its citizens. I've lived my life in North Palo Alto, I'm a computer scientist and academic from Stanford, and I've paid a lot of taxes over my lifetime. I'm not smug nor timid, and like every other person, I'm due my taxpayer rights. I'm not the first to be disappointed with experiencing poor treatment from our city government. The grand jury recently convened and criticized Palo Alto city government for not being upfront and honest with the citizenry and the public in general. The Palo Alto government, city government, has a duty to follow the law and to treat all citizens equally. I requested a hearing with the city to clear myself of falsely construed defamatory accusations. This is the fourth time I've come before council insisting that you get involved and order the city attorney's office to offer me a fair hearing or dismiss their frivolous action. Fearing I'd file a lawsuit for being injured on city property and city negligent, the city filed action first. It's called a scare tactic. This is my last opportunity to speak with you in this way. This truly needs your immediate and final attention, and I won't have another chance to speak with you before the hearing scheduled later this week. I need protection from slander, defamation, and the Palo Alto city government violating my civil liberties by refusing to give me my rights of due process guaranteed in the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendment. The city attorney's office has basically taken away my rights to a fair hearing, fair and legal hearing, and has already found me guilty without due process. They set it, they set a hearing date only after first sentencing me, and they won't suspend the sentence and wait for the hearing verdict. Sentence first, trial later. I'm being made to feel like I'm walking into Gestapo headquarters. The city refuses to give me a complete list of witnesses and accusers, they refuse to give me any contact information for any witnesses and accusers, they're basing their case on hearsay because they state they're calling no accusers for me to confront, they expect me to defend myself against gossip. Without explanation, they took away all my rights to discovery, they've given me a hostile hearing officer bias to the city, and they won't replace him with someone impartial, and they've ignored nearly all my California Public Record Act requests, including my requests for my hearing rights. I am dizzyed by the city's runaround. We live in a democracy, we don't live in a society of secrets. I'm being set up, and I'll basically be attending a kangaroo hearing. Please intervene. This is not Bolivia or Mexico. Come on, guys, get involved, please.
Thank you, Mike Francois, to be followed by C. Ready.
Mayor, and council, thank you for letting me speak. This is from me, this is the way I see things, I'm going to share with you, because you guys are my neighbors, whether you like to hear it or not, I'm going to say it. You know, I gave you the title of Bloody Rails a few years ago, and it seems to be taken off. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now. Bloody Rails, meaning every, you know, it's growing up, teenagers, suicides are growing up. This area, you had two dropouts do, who dropped out from college who did very well in this area, and you had Hewlett and Packard, you had Mark Zuckerberg, you have the Microsoft guy, where, I forget his name right now, but he worked down at IBM. You have some of the highest intellectual people in this, in the state. In fact, your city is listed as number one in California, it's the best place to live. You know, you don't have a ghetto here, but yet you have a high suicide rate. We have a partial ghetto in East Palo Alto where I'm from, but we don't have a high suicide rate. In fact, your suicide rate amongst teenagers is probably the highest in the country based on your wealth and your education system. And that's nothing to brag about, it should be the reverse if anything. In fact, the only problem, you know, I found out that the only problems in neighborhoods with cultures are, amongst my culture, we have a problem, we kill one another. And we kill one another, in your culture, you guys commit suicides, is that so much? I don't know with Asian and white, I've noticed, they commit suicide because it's based on money and greed and success. I find out a lot of cultures come here, the kids come here, and they're born, even some of them were born here to support the families abroad. I had a friend who went to Stanford, her friend went to Stanford, should I say, the girl was washing dishes, the girl had a nervous breakdown, they kept calling her, she wouldn't stop washing dishes. She had a nervous breakdown because she couldn't, she felt she wasn't making the grades to keep her parents happy. And this is a serious thing. Also... Also, you know, I've had downfalls in my life, but I've never thought of suicide, we just don't think that way in my culture. We don't have a lot, but we don't think of suicide. You know, I messed up, I worked with sheriff's department before, I was a guard in a jail, I made a terrible mistake, it's on record there, but 80% of it is maybe true, 20% is not true, it depends on how you read it, but I didn't think about suicide, I thought about getting revenge, and I said, "Where am I going with this?" I said, "I made a mistake, correct it, get back on board, don't take it out on them, they have their way of thinking." I wasn't part of the old boy routine, but I didn't think about suicide because I went from, what, $19 an hour down to $5 an hour and no benefits. So I'm just saying, do a survey of your schools and maybe actually children, what they think.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. C. Ready to be followed by Herb Borack.
Good evening, I'd like to take the three minutes opportunity to first thank the veterans. We wouldn't be here speaking freedom if we had other results in World War II and all the wars we've had. So, thank you, veterans of Palo Alto. The second item is, you know, I went to the library as well, I didn't check out those books, I checked out other books, it's fantastic, congratulations, it's a job well done, it's just as good as it can be, I'm pretty impressed, but I come from Newport Beach too, I have a very good library there, excellent library. The third thing is elections. So, congratulations, I think the citizens have spoken, so it's now for, I'm going to congratulate Karen, Greg, Tom, Eric, and Cory and Lydia, whoever is going to lead that. The most important thing is people to listen, the council members that are coming in and the council members that are here to listen to what was spoken. And I think you need to respect citizens' wishes and continue to do the work, as good a work as you do. So, let's unite. You know, I think there's a lot of bickering, a lot of nonsense, unneeded talk, I think we need to unite, we need to have a party, we'll all drink beer and go, move on to get to what we need to get to. And I would suggest that we take on Keburly, you know, the whole area is stinky looking, and we need to just get to it, make it alive, make it what it is already there, fix it, and let people use what they're using, and then in the future it'll become a library or, not a library, I'm sorry, a school if we need it, all that. But for a Palo Alto city that has all this money to have 1920s looking and deteriorating facility is not good. There's children, you know, there are thousands, hundreds of kids that are there, and we want to make it look good. You know, fix the roof, make it look like a Embarcadero Center, thank you.
Thank you. Herb Borack to be followed by Arthur Keller.
Hi, I noticed the other day that the bus stop across the street is no longer there, and instead there's a freight loading zone in front of Roxy Rapp's building at 261 Hamilton Avenue. So I called the Valley Transportation Association Agency customer service number shortly before this meeting, and as far as they're concerned, there's supposed to be a bus stop there. There are two, maybe, you know, one part of VTA knows what's going on and the other doesn't, but as far as I know, there's supposed to be a bus stop there, and instead there's a freight loading zone, and at the Bryant's end of the street, there's a taxicab stand. If a building owner or a developer needs to reserve parking spaces for himself, there's a fee in the municipal fee schedule to pay for that exclusive use of the street parking, rather than having the city label the thing as a freight loading zone as if it's for everybody when it's really just for one developer. I noticed there's some markings on the pavement in Centennial Walk, so maybe there's more construction going on. And as far as the bus stop removal, if the information I got from VTA customer service is correct, namely that there is a bus stop still there, then it's a question of who removed that sign and how it was done. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker, Arthur Keller.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve us on the Planning and Transportation Commission for the last eight years. One thing interesting about tomorrow being Veterans Day is my parents were Holocaust survivors. They both were liberated by United States Army, not quite 70 years ago. My father passed away a few years ago, but my mother still survives and lives in Palo Alto. But at least one positive thing about not being reappointed to the Planning Commission is that if I should decide to run for one of your seats, I'll be able to do that with a lot more free time. Thank you.
Thank you, and I want to point out that our policies state that telephonic attendance shall only be permitted in the event of an extraordinary event such as medical, family, or similar emergency requiring a council member's absence. Since we've made appointments this way, I would like to go ahead and make reappointments if you don't mind this evening, or if we want to ask the clerk to see whether or not any of the impacts of our telephonic vote was going to make a change or a difference with how our colleagues voted. And if you can get back to me on that, we'll go ahead with the agenda. So, with that, we are at minutes approval for September 15th and September 22nd, I need to have a motion.
Excuse me, point of order, where did that interpretation of our rules come from? Is that the city attorney speaking or not? She's shaking her head no.
It's right here in the procedures and protocols.
I'm asking the city attorney's opinion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, with your leave, I believe the mayor quoted the rule. She read the rule as it was printed, so I have not provided any advice or guidance as to how the rule should be applied. It's my understanding that the rule has traditionally been applied first by the clerk in setting up the matter, and then ultimately that could be interpretation that's subject to a decision of the council as to how to interpret and apply its own rule. I've not given any advice on how to do that in this situation, and I'm not aware of the specific facts around tonight's telephonic participation.
So who is making this decision? Obviously, Councilmember Vice Mayor Niss thought she was qualified to vote, and on what basis is anybody else overruling that?
The discretion is the mayor's, and since we did not follow policy, I felt that it was important to revert back to policy. And so I'm going to ask the clerk if there was going to be a change in any of the majority votes to see if this would have impacted anything.
City Attorney, is it the mayor's discretion?
So you do have a reconsideration provision that allows a member of the majority to ask that an item be reopened during the same council meeting? My notes don't show whether that's the case, I showed two appointments that were made with five votes, and I don't know whether Councilmember Shepherd is in the majority on both of those.
Vice Mayor Niss, you mean?
Excuse me, Mayor Shepherd. Because you are the one who's asking for the items to be reconsidered, Madam Mayor?
Right.
So I believe that the mayor is suggesting an interpretation of the rule, that the rule didn't permit, if I'm understanding your comment correctly, did not permit the telephonic participation tonight. And as customary, the mayor can make a procedural interpretation in the first instance, subject to a vote of the majority of the council, if the council disagrees with that interpretation and wishes to interpret it differently.
In other words, her motion, if it's a motion, is as a member of the council, not as mayor.
So are you saying I need to have a second to do this?
Why don't you clarify what it is that is your intention? You've asked the clerk for some information.
Right, I've asked the clerk to see if, in fact, the impact of the vice mayor's votes, since we have not followed our procedure and from our protocols handbook, will make an impact on us having to vote with another majority for another member. Because I think that in the Plan and Transportation, that that is the case, I know that one, I'm not sure if there's another one. We've got a lot of people who are going to talk tonight.
So Mayor Shepherd, you know, I think there's two aspects to what you've raised. One is to reopen some of the votes that the council has taken, and if you were in the majority on those items, you can ask that that be done. But the other question is whether Councilmember Vice Mayor Niss may participate by phone.
Right.
And that's an interpretation of your rules, that's yours as the chair to make in the first instance, subject to a vote of the council, as to whether, in other words, you have stated as a fact that the rule was not followed, and I think that that's an interpretation that could be made by the body in terms of how to apply and interpret its rules.
So are you suggesting that I make a motion to go ahead and vote as to whether or not we all agree together that whether the rule was followed, and whether we want to reopen the vote?
Well, I think, you know, you're going to need to reopen those items first, and so if you were in the majority on that, and the clerk can tell us whether that's the case, again, my notes don't show it on the ARB item, they do suggest that on the PTC item. And then you will need to determine whether Vice Mayor Niss may participate.
And I get to determine that, or the body?
You can make an initial ruling, you can be overruled by a motion and five votes.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to wait and see. Are you ready to tell me?
Yes, on the Architectural Review Board, Kaeyoung Kim would have only received four And on the Planning and Transportation Commission, Adrian Fine would have only received four votes.
Okay, in that case, I would like to revote for a position on ARB and PTC, and do I need to have a second to do that, to reconsider? Give me the language. Okay, I need to have a second.
You voted for?
I did. No, I didn't. I didn't vote for ARB, I don't think.
Who did? On the ARB, you did vote for Adrian Fine?
Yeah, that's PTC.
No, no. PTC, you voted for Adrian, and on the ARB, you voted for Catherine Ballantyne and Richard Sholerman.
Okay, so I cannot do it on the ARB. I can only do it on Plan and Transportation. So to correct the vote, I would like to make a motion that we revote for Plan and Transportation, but I need a second.
Can I ask my order?
Yes, you can.
Mike? I just switched my votes.
If you end up revoting.
If we end up revoting, but I just can't just say now, I'll just switch my votes.
So this will be for Plan and Transportation? And, okay, I have a second from?
I do need to check on the second question as to the reconsideration, I need a minute to check the rule.
Thank you, okay. Would you like us to just move on in the agenda, and then we can take a look at this before we take up action items?
So, I actually will move to reconsider the ARB then, since I voted, that'll solve your problem, we can then vote now and be done with it.
Vote for one additional member, but let's go ahead and do consent calendar, so that the city?
Why, Molly doesn't need to look it up anymore.
I think you can second mine, but I can't be involved in his.
Well, I can second both of them.
You can second mine.
I will second the...
Now I have two motions on the floor at the same time, so can we do PTC first and then go to ARB? So, I have a lot of lights here, so I'm going to have to go through them, but would you like to speak at all to your second to reopening the Plan and Transportation ballots?
Yes, I think it's incumbent on us to follow our rules in this regard, and it's, I hope that my colleagues will focus on those rules, we may in fact have the same outcome with a revote, but to proceed in a way that follows the procedures, and this is not a protocol, this is one of our procedure items, that it's pretty clear on a reread on this that it's, that the word "shall" only be permitted, is there or not may.
All right, let me go down the lights. Councilmember Klein.
No.
No, no more?
Yeah, I'd already spoken.
Okay. Councilmember Scharf. No, that's later, you want to do that?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Holman?
I no longer need to speak.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
So what are we voting on?
We're voting to reopen the second, to vote for the last Plan and Transportation appointment.
Okay.
And that motion carries with Councilmember Price voting no and Vice Mayor Niss absent. Now, should we go ahead and vote, or should we take up the second motion on the Architectural Review Board?
Go ahead.
Vote, okay. Councilmember Scharf, would you like to make a motion?
I'm voting to reopen the ARB.
I need a second?
I will second.
You voted on the same person then?
No, but I don't... I did not, but I don't believe the second required.
That's correct. So it does, so to clarify the rule, it does require a second, the initial motion must be made by someone who voted in the majority, the second can be made by any council member.
Okay, good. Councilmember Scharf, would you like to speak at all to your motion?
No, I would not.
Councilmember Burt?
No.
Councilmember Holman.
Should we go down to motion reconsider?
Hang on, yeah. Councilmember Holman, did you wish to speak on this?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. So we're going to open up for one more vote of the Architectural Review Board, for final placement of the commissioner.
The second commissioner?
Yeah, the second, right, this is for the Architectural Review Board to vote for one more commissioner. So I think everybody's voted, and that motion carries with Councilmember Price voting no and Vice Mayor Niss absent, so we have our ballots for the Plan and Transportation, so let's go ahead and cast our ballot, and I will move on to consent calendar while the clerk catches up with us. All right, the next item on the agenda is our, yes. Councilmember Klein, are you, you've got your mic on, so that's why I hear you. Okay, let's go ahead, and the consent calendar, do I have any cards for public speakers on the consent calendar? No? Okay, in that case, I'd like to entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Some move.
Thank you, got to move in a second, and I see no light, so let's go ahead and vote on consent calendar, where all items will be approved at one time. And that motion carries unanimously with, well, it carries with Vice Mayor Niss absent. Now we are in the action items, I want to see if the clerks have any announcement for the Plan and Transportation? Okay, we'll go forward with item number 19, and then we'll look for the results of the votes for commissions. So, item number 19 is a resolution adopting the 2015-2023 Housing Element. Every city in California is required to have a general plan, in Palo Alto, we call this the Comprehensive Plan. In this plan, we must update the housing chapter called the Housing Element and gain state certification. Last year, we certified at the end of the eight-year period, this year, we are required to complete the process by the end of January 15th, excuse me, January 2015. This is the Comprehensive Plan Element, which requires the adoption of zoning for our fair share of the regional housing needs allocation assigned to Palo Alto by the Association of Bay Area Governments, that's for 1,988 units. First, I will turn this item over to staff for presentation, then turn to Councilmember Schmidt, who is Chair of the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, which consists of four council members, two school board members, and one planning commissioner. Next, we will hear from the public, then return to council for questions from non-members of the committee. Finally, I will ask Chairman, Chair Schmidt to make the motion to approve the resolution before us tonight. Staff, are you ready with your presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and council members, I'm Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director, I'm joined by Tim Wong, who's the interim advanced planning manager and the housing expert on our staff. We're here this evening, as the mayor indicated, with a resolution, we're hoping you will conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution to adopt our Housing Element update, and before Tim walks us through a brief presentation, I wanted to offer my thanks to all of those who have made this project go so smoothly this year. First, the council's Regional Housing Mandate Committee has met almost monthly during this process, many thanks to Councilmember Schmidt and other members of the committee. In addition, the Planning and Transportation Commission held public hearings at critical junctures along the way in this planning process, and there was a housing community panel that was empaneled, and again, met almost monthly during this process to provide us with their input. during this process to provide us with their input and support. And all of this work would not be possible without those efforts. In addition, I'd like to, of course, thank Tim Wong and the consultants who he worked with on this project. Tim has been masterful. It's always difficult to construct these housing elements in a way that the State Office of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, will accept. And that is just what Tim and his consultants have done. So with that, I'll hand it over to Tim.
Okay, thank you, Hillary, and good evening, City Council. Again, my name is Tim Wong, and I'm the project manager for the Housing Element. So a quick overview, why are we doing this? We just approved it in August of 2013. And also, I'll be covering some Housing Element requirements, Housing Element programs that have been added as part of this update, secret review, and some next steps for the Housing Element. So why are we doing this? The Housing Element is one of the seven mandated elements of a comprehensive plan or general plan, and this is the only element that requires state certification. And as Hillary said, the due date for this cycle is the end of January 2015. Housing elements need to be updated every eight years, and for this period, it's 2015 to 2023. And the purpose of the Housing Element is to address the housing needs for income levels, very low-income, low-income, moderate-income, and above-moderate-income households. And so again, the statutory deadline is the end of January 2015. And what are some of the consequences of not having a certified Housing Element? First and foremost, the city would be vulnerable to legal challenges. Our neighbors to the north, Menlo Park, was an example of that, in that they didn't have a certified Housing Element since the early 80s, and therefore, they were sued. And also, the state is tying more transportation and housing funds to certified housing elements. So therefore, if we didn't have a certified housing element, we would not be eligible for transportation funds, which we received a little over $4 million as of last year. And also, there have been questions or comments that, why don't we just withdraw from A-BAG to remove ourselves from this process? But if we were to decouple or remove ourselves from A-BAG, we would still have this requirement. As Hillary mentioned, there has been extensive public participation through the Housing Element Community Panel. In addition, the city hosted two Housing Affordability Workshops in April. In addition, an online housing questionnaire was prepared with over 400 participants. This questionnaire was available in both English and Spanish. And in addition, there was a housing website dedicated to this update, where any member of the public could come and be fully apprised of the status of the Housing Element update. One of the requirements of the Housing Element is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment or Needs Allocation Requirement. In other words, the city must prepare for its fair share of housing in the future through 2023. This is not a construction obligation. However, the city in its Housing Element must plan to accommodate its city's fair share. And for this 2014-2022 RENA period, the city is required to provide 1,988, not provide, excuse me, accommodate, again, accommodate 1,988 units for this eight-year cycle. It's kind of small to see, but this graphic shows the city's production over the past 25 years. Bottom line is, the city has constructed 58% of its RENA allocation. However, I will say that in the period from 99 to 2006, the city had a high percentage or a high activity of housing construction. Historically, it's generally about 35% to 40%. And right now, for this cycle, we are, we've constructed about 25% of our allocation so far. So as part of it, we have to meet our RENA requirement. And again, for the 2015-2023, our allocation is 1,988 units. The state generally requires a surplus of approximately 10% of your allocation. So in this instance, we said 200 units. Therefore, we had to find sites to accommodate 2,188 units. The good news is, we can carry over from our 2007-2014 Housing Element, which almost 1,400 units could carry over. We have 440 units in the pipeline, those are, which have been entitled or have received building permits. Therefore, our estimated unmet need is 369 units, which we had to find sites to accommodate those 369 units. So on June 2nd, when we first brought this to the council, the council recommended that we use the following four tiers, if you will, to meet our 369 units of unmet need through existing units in Colorado Park, second units, units from the Frye's site, and lastly, sites on San Antonio. As part of that recommendation, though, the council recommended to add a policy to state that the city will continue to review those sites for more transit-rich sites. In other words, look at sites to be able to swap out some of those San Antonio sites for maybe more transit-appropriate sites in downtown or California Ave. So after June 2nd, staff submitted a draft submittal to HCD, which included council's recommendation and two new housing programs. Program 2.2.5, which again, is the re-review of sites, and then another program, 3.1.14, which says that we will look at cohousing, sharing, sharing of housing to try to increase the housing supply, if you will. We went through a number of conversations with HCD as they reviewed the July 7th Advent Draft. And one of their main concerns is, in our housing inventory sites, we have a number of small sites. And they were concerned that because of the number of small sites, it decreases the opportunities for housing development. Therefore, as part of the discussions with the Housing and Community Development Department, we negotiated Program 2.1.9, which allows for incentives for lock consolidation for 100% affordable housing development. And I think that was the key program in HCD's eyes to, for us to move forward in this process. Other HCD comments, they were also had issue with our programs. Many of our programs said to assess, consider, explore, and they wanted additional commitment from the city. So therefore, in our programs, we added "adopt" as appropriate language in many of those proposed programs. And also, they wanted us to implement or look at implementing some of these programs sooner than later to receive that beneficial impact. And while HCD was reviewing the administrative draft, the Community Panel and RHMC continued to propose additional programs. Some of the new programs included implementing the PTOD overlay in the University Ave downtown area, also on extremely small parcels, look at, not incentives, but look at requirements that would allow horizontal mixed use on some of these mixed-use zone parcels. In other words, residential, sole residential on one parcel, and then sole commercial on the adjacent property. And another program that we said we'd look at is to prepare a local parking database to determine what our actual parking demands are for different housing uses, such as senior housing, affordable senior housing, or affordable housing near transit, what those actual parking demands are. And lastly, another program was to evaluate developing specific plans for downtown El Camino Real and the California Ave areas. And with all that, on September 5th, HCD issued a letter stating that the city's draft Housing Element with the proposed revisions was statute, in compliance with, or statutorily in compliance with state Housing Element law, which is always a good thing to have. So. Lastly, with those revisions, staff incorporated them into the public hearing draft, the draft that you have before you. It was circulated on September 18th, and includes all the proposed programs and some other minor text and quantitative revisions. And so, lastly, there's also the initial study, the mitigated negative declaration that was circulated in association with the Housing Element. The 30-day review period started on September 9th and, excuse me, August 29th, and it ended on September 30th. There are no rezones, I would like to point out, no rezones for any of these properties in the housing inventory. But just to be safe, we have added mitigation measures for traffic and hazardous, hazardous waste impacts for site-specific projects. But, and those have been incorporated into the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So on October 1st, the PTC recommended that the city council adopt the Housing Element. October 9th, at the RHMC meeting, the RHMC also recommended approval with some revisions. And those revisions have been included in your staff report and also will be, if approved, revised in the public hearing draft. And lastly, on October 30th, the Community Panel also recommended approval of the public hearing draft, however, without the RHMC proposed revisions. So lastly, staff recommends that the city council adopt the mitigated negative declaration, the mitigation monitoring program, and then lastly, adopt the resolution to, or approve the resolution to adopt the Housing Element update. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim. Just one clarification, your, the resolution before you does include the three revisions recommended by the RHMC. They're on Packet Page 598, for those who are looking for the specifics of the recommendation.
Okay, with that, I'd like to take it over to the Chair of the Regional Housing Committee to share how the committee handled this project all year long.
I would like to thank my colleagues on the committee, councilmembers Holman, Price, and Scharf, for spending a lot of time looking at the numbers, the revisions, interacting with staff throughout this, the responsiveness of staff to the questions that came up. We got valuable input from the meetings of the Community Panel that took place each month before the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, so they were available for us. I know there were two our Palo Alto meetings that took place around the Housing Element. There were a lot of inputs from outside public interest groups, housing advocates, and of course, the State Housing and Community Development Agency that worked closely with us. This was a unique attribute in that we had only approved the Housing Element for 2007 to 14, the year before. There were a lot of sites identified on that that had not been utilized. So there was ability to carry over. We were able to identify sites that already were zoned for housing, so there was no rezoning changes implied in this. When we brought the preliminary version to the council on June 2nd, there was an important amendment put on, approved by the council at that time, that we would send in the application with these housing sites, but that we identified that as we worked through the comprehensive plan, we would have the ability to come back and relook at sites, specifically whether there might be sites in the downtown or California Avenue that were more appropriate for denser housing than in South El Camino or San Antonio. So that was an important revision that has already been approved by the council. On July 7th, there was approval that we would look at specific or precise plans for downtown Cal Avenue, El Camino, that again, might have some impact on where and how many sites we identified in those places. So what you have before you is the work of, a result of work that has taken place over, I guess you can go back two or three, four years now. But it does respond to the mandate that we were given at the end of 2013, to fulfill requirements to identify sites for the housing that is required by the plan. We have met that, and in front of you is the housing site that does that. I guess there's three outstanding questions in that the Community Panel on the last meeting did not approve three changes suggested by the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, so just you're aware of those changes. I think they are minor in their impacts. But the first one changes the wording from amend the zoning code to specify minimum density to consider amending. It removes this phrase, "setback modifications," as one of six examples given of things that might take place from Program H2.1.9. And finally, it adds a sentence, there is tables in there on Pages 78 and 79, that identify the sources of money available for affordable housing. And the table gives the idea that community, I'm sorry, that housing sources are responsible for more of the housing impact funds than commercial sources. And the Housing Mandate Committee decided to put in a phrase that said, "There is concern that the commercial developers are not paying an equitable share." And actually, if you look at 3.1.6, it does say there that the council has a right at any time to adjust the development impact fees. So this is just a note in the text near that table, that the council retains that right. So those are the only changes. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Housing Element as presented to you.
Thank you very much, and hang on. Do we have any, I don't have any cards up here for this item, but I'm imagining we have speakers for this item. And we have speakers for this item.
And just to clarify, Madam Mayor, the motion was to adopt the resolution, including the Housing Element and the secret document?
We're not making a motion right now, because we have to go out to the public, and then we will make a motion, so. We're gonna, so we have two cards, one from Phyllis Castle and the other one from Andy Isaacson. Isaacson, and you will have three minutes, Phyllis Castle. Are you still here? There you are. And this is on the item of the housing element.
Correct, and I'm Phyllis Castle, I'm speaking for Ellen Forbes, President of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. If you time me, I think it's less than a minute. The League of Women Voters of Palo Alto supports our city's efforts to provide more diverse and affordable housing for all income groups. We are therefore pleased that the city has prepared a draft housing element that is on schedule and that satisfies the state's requirements. We urge you to continue to support the submission, the submission of a complete element by the deadline early next year. In other words, turn it in now, so we have it done. Although the city has now identified a sufficient number of potential housing sites to satisfy the requirements, these sites are not always located as close to transit and walkable service as they might be. The council itself has recognized the need to identify promising sites in such areas as downtown, near California Avenue, and along El Camino Real. We urge you to continue the process of identifying promising sites and preparing them for appropriate zoning where necessary, even after the element has been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Andy Isaacson. He's not here? He's not here? Okay, in that case, I will bring it back to council and look for a motion from Council Member Schmidt.
I make a motion that the council approve resolution as stated in Attachment A to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and the revised 2015 to 2023 housing element update public review draft as the housing element of the city's comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Not further.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt, would you, Scharf, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure. I also would like to thank my colleagues on the Regional Housing Committee. I thought, you know, it was a long and arduous process in some ways, and also the community. There was a good working group, and they met, and we thought about their, their input on a, on a regular basis, and I thought that was a great process. I thought it was very thoughtful and very helpful, and actually, I also would like to call out Tim as well, Tim Wong. You did a great job in, in walking us through that. So, I, I think, when we're thinking about the housing element of the comprehensive plan, it's different than other parts of the comprehensive plan. The real difference about, about the housing element is that we have a regulatory agency that has to approve everything we do. So, once you put something into your housing element, you can only take it out with permission of that regulatory agency, which means you have to be very thoughtful about what goes in here, because you're tying future councils' hands, frankly. So, whatever you put in here, it's virtually impossible to get out of here if it would in some way make, Tim always had a good phrase, I forget what it was, but if it was something like, it would make housing more challenging to produce, or, or something like that. So, this is, so it was a good structure to have a committee that went through this, and I'd say we went through this line by line, we talked about each change, we debated each change, and we thought about it in terms of the regulatory environment. And I won't go through them all, but I think, for instance, on item number two, there was a lot of thought about, you know, there's been a lot of community angst and concern about setbacks. And what we took out on item number two was to give the, the ability, not, to give us the ability to say no to, to, when people want to reduce the setback. And I thought that was important. If we'd left that in there, for instance, we would have had no discretion on that, and no future council would probably have discretion on it. So, it's important that we went through this word by word and thought about it, and I, I think everyone should know that we did that. So, anyway, I would urge our colleagues to approve this with the changes that we made, and thanks.
All right. I'm not looking at any colleagues that want to speak to this until now. Councilmember Price.
Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate all the community involvement, all the committee structure, the staff work on this. I guess my following comments are going to be a little bit unusual. I will be supporting the motion reluctantly. The reason I'm supporting the motion is I recognize there's a lot at stake here regarding the certification as it relates to needed funding, and I recognize that the implications of extended discussion are serious. And the reason I have hesitation, or the, just my comments in general, is I just want to reassure, I think the staff work has been excellent, and I think the involvement by everyone has been wonderful. But the fact is, at the end of the day, we are meeting the, kind of the minimum requirements in my personal view, and I have participated in these discussions. I think we are being extraordinarily timid. We had no zoning changes, and I recognize a lot of important work will be done after the document is certified, and I agree with all of that. Issues like adding information about consolidation of smaller parcels to make parcels really more make, workable for affordable housing is really critical here. If you look at the questionnaire that went out to the community, the same issues come back over and over and over, the need for more variety, more diversity, more affordable housing, and we have heard that from, over and over and over and over from many members of our community. We are here in terms of the housing opportunity sites, without going through the whole history. We have only done the Colorado Park and the Tier 1, 2, 3, and I've said before, and I was frankly outvoted, so this is just, just a recognition of that, that the other tiers, I felt we should have gone up to through Tier 6 to really have a more robust, more forward-thinking update to the housing element. Again, quickly, on, on Tier 4 and 5, it's the concept of having residential units in combination with surfing, surface parking lots, and to me, that is something that is critical, that is needed, and I certainly hope that in the future, that we embrace that as an opportunity. It's very clear that the locations of those surface parking lots in general are, tend to be closer to transit and tend to meet the goals in which we so strongly talk about. So, like I said, I will vote this as a, in recognition of the fine work and as a favor to Ms. Gittleman, but I'm doing this with some pain, and I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Councilmember Berman?
Well, I want to say thank you to the Regional Housing Mandate Committee, and I think it was Councilmember Price who took my place on that committee. Were you on that last year?
I never wanted to be on.
So, thank you especially for taking my place. Because I know how much work it is, especially to try to get a housing element done in a year to meet the, the kind of accelerated state deadlines that existed, that it, it's fantastic that we're doing that. And thank you to the, the citizen committee, I don't know if some of them are here, I know Councilmember-elect DuBois is here, and maybe some others that were on that committee, for the hard work that they did. I think that, that was a great addition, getting a lot of, kind of resident input into this process. And the heavy lifting, I think, is yet to come. This was a heavy lift, but it was the easy low-hanging fruit to get us past the state deadlines, so that there were no negative ramifications of that. But I'm really looking forward to the conversations that we're going to have over the next couple of years about moving some of the housing sites from South Palo Alto to different parts of town. I think that there, there's a lot of information out there that, you know, the younger generation, and even some of the folks in the older generation, want different things now than they did a generation ago, in terms of housing, in terms of where they want to be, in terms of location, to services and restaurants and transportation, and maybe less a quarter acre and a picket fence, and a little more condo within walking distance to everything that they want, so they don't have to drive everywhere. So, we've gotten a lot of really helpful information from members of the public on new ideas, on things that other municipalities are doing, and, and I'm really looking forward to having that very kind of open-minded conversation about what's best for Palo Alto for the next, you know, eight years, but really next 30 years.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, I also want to express my appreciation to both our staff and the committee. I think they've done an excellent job in refining this, and we, we've set ourselves up to be able to do these next refinements in the coming months. And so, I just want to say a couple of things, because there seems to be a continuing misconception in the community about what drives this housing element and, and what causes the, the city to come forward with the plans that we do. We hear the refrain of, well, just don't do it, that simple one. And the simplest answer to that is, no, it's the law. And it's the law that we not only have a housing element, but that it be, that the, it be determined that, and certified that it has fully complied with law, or adequately complied with law. And so, that's the first and foremost reason. The second, Tim had pointed out on slide number, sorry, number four, the potential consequences of not meeting the deadline. And the most common thing we hear in the community is, oh, you just want it because you want to get some grant dollars. And while those funds are not insignificant for our transportation and, and other objectives, the most critical driver is that first sub-bullet, which is literally, communities are open to legal challenges, and those challenges are becoming more supported by the courts, not less so. And the consequence is loss of local control over zoning and land use decisions. And that is not an idle inconsequential consequence. This literally means that we could lose the ability to make our own zoning decisions and land use decisions. We saw that the city of Manlo Park was basically on the cusp of doing so, and went into a frenzy of rezoning in, in ways that frankly, they probably would not have done exactly the same if they had not been under the gun, that they either needed to rapidly bring their housing element into compliance and into the satisfaction of the entities who were bringing lawsuit against them, or if they didn't do that, then consequences would have been even more severe. And finally, Tim had pointed out, and as we can see from our last housing element, it's not a requirement that cities build these amounts of housing, it's a requirement that we zone for them in a way that is genuine. And, and most cities don't have the amount of housing constructed that's in their housing elements. Occasionally, you'll get one that exceeds it, and we did in a prior period, from 98 to 2006. Interestingly, what drove us over the top was not what we zoned for, but in fact, what we didn't zone for, it was housing that ended up occurring in former industrial areas that weren't in our housing element. So, these things are complicated and, and aren't always able to anticipate all of the outcomes, but what is clear is that it's a requirement that we have this element, and that we've done a thorough job in developing it in a way that will have the least negative impacts on our community while meeting the requirements, and, and really moving the housing toward locations where it is best suited, closer to transit, closer to walkable retail, and, and housing types that are serving the emerging demographics that we have in the community. So, thanks again.
Councilmember Holman?
Since I was on the committee and have been on the committee, I will be brief here, but I just want to point out and thank staff especially for one aspect of this. It's on, it's on slide number nine, and that is the Colorado Park existing units. And going back to my planning commission days, I was urging staff, and some of us were urging staff, to explore this opportunity. HCD does not make it easy to be able to count existing units, but I think it's worth the effort, and it is considerable effort, because, as I've often said, these are the most affordable from a provision standpoint, meaning they are the most achievable and most economically feasible for a housing entity to provide for the community. They're already built, they already exist, they're at risk of being lost, and they're already integrated into the community. So, I know it isn't easy to identify these, we made you work hard to go do it, we made you go back and, and look at them again to see what you could find, and with the cooperation of the Housing Corporation, but I do want to call those out and thank you for that, because we have saved 23 units for the next several years, and I thank you very much for that.
Okay, well, I want to thank the committee and thank the chair, I think Chair Schmidt, excuse me, Chair, Councilmember Schmidt, knew how critical it was to me to make sure that we got this through timely, because I did not want to be in the snarl that Manlo Park was in in 2012. Last year, I actually contemplated failing this, because I objected this method of designing your community, something I've objected to the entire time I've been on council, before I was on council. I think this is the wrong way to build community, it's the wrong way to design your community. I think that this is some of the reasons why people are not wanting to get civically engaged, because there's just too many state mandates that don't make any sense and take an awful lot of autonomy away from how the community gets to build how they want to live. If we want to decide our growth, I think we should be able to decide our growth instead of having it fit into the type of matrix that we've had to do. It takes an awful lot of time, energy, concern, there's a lot of organizations that watch over all of this, it's a whole little industry that's going on. So, I'm sad that we have to do it this way. Obviously, we need more housing, but I don't know why Palo Alto can't figure that out themselves, and why we have to go through this little procedure. It's not a little procedure, it's a big procedure. So, unlike Yale, I'll be reluctantly voting for this, like I did last year, for different reasons, for the reasons that I really would like to see this council, and Palo Alto has eight years now, or probably not eight years, maybe like six, to come up with, trying to figure out how we can, the city can find more of its own ability to manage its own, you know, planning and vision and build community. And I think that Palo Alto is the community to do that, I've always thought that. And so, I hope that this council takes it up, and, but at the same time, you made this look easy this year. Last year, nobody knew what was going on. We approved the housing element, and now, we've got people well-informed, we've been giving people information about what the rules and regulations are, why we have to do it, they're very well-informed, and that was not the case just a year ago, and I think that staff has done a great job of doing exactly that, and I think that the committee has done a great job of doing exactly that. And when I was talking to the school board member Dana Tom, at the beginning of school this year, parents were complaining, why does the city keep doing housing? How come there's more people moving to Palo Alto? And he said, because we have this procedure that we go through, and it's a state mandate. So, I actually think that the state is, is fighting communities at this point, and that there should be some type of relief. I, I know that we've discussed it before about how we can open this up and try to figure out a way forward for density bonus law, you only get to keep the units for 30 years, then they go to market, things like that. I think there should be more controls with some of the state mandates that are local control-oriented. So, that's my statement. On the other hand, thank you very much for doing this, because you did make it look very easy this year. You put that stakeholder group together, I saw the picture of them, they're celebrating with a cake, and I see people from different ideologies right there in that room smiling. And I think that that's the way this community likes to work, and has always historically worked, and I certainly hope it works that way in the future. But, so, with that, those are my comments for this, and I, and again, I'm going to encourage people to come up with ways to have this conversation be much easier for the community and the state, et cetera, because these unfunded state mandates are just flying out of Sacramento right now. Okay, with that, let's go ahead and vote. And that motion, and we have passed our housing element. It, it's carried with Council, with Vice Mayor Niss absent. I'm going to go back to the clerk to see how we are doing with I'm going to go back to the clerk to see how we are doing with our voting for the Architectural Review Board and the Plan and Transportation, if we have anybody elected.
For the Architectural Review Board, we again do not have a majority. Councilmember Berman voted for Kai Kim, Councilmember Burt for Kenneth Hu, Councilmember Holman for Kenneth Hu, Councilmember Klein for Kai Kim, Councilmember Price for Kai Kim, Councilmember Scharf for Kai Kim, Councilmember Schmidt for Kenneth Hu, and Mayor Shepherd for Matthew Harris. So Matthew Harris had one, Kenneth Hu had three, and Kai Kim had four. For the Planning and Transportation Commission, we do have a majority. We have Councilmember Berman voted for Adrian Fine, Councilmember Burt voted for Arthur Keller, Councilmember Holman voted for Arthur Keller, Councilmember Klein voted for Adrian Fine, Councilmember Price for Adrian Fine, Councilmember Scharf for Adrian Fine, Councilmember Schmidt for Arthur Keller, and Mayor Shepherd for Adrian Fine. So Adrian Fine with five votes gets the PTC.
Is seated. Okay, good, thank you. And so do you want us to go to the next item, and then we can have the call out for Architectural Review Board?
Yes, please.
Okay. In that case, we're going to go to item 20. And item 20 is the Friends of the Junior Museum and Zoo Letter of Intent for Construction and Operation of a New Junior Museum and Zoo Building. The Friends of Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo have played an integral role in the support and operation of the, of the zoo since 1962. I didn't know that. Tonight, we are here, and we are being asked to approve a letter of intent, which is our attachment A, between the city and Friends to collaborate on an agreement for a new building and facility for up to 40 years. Staff has a presentation which will feature the new vision for the museum and zoo. After the presentation, we will hear from the public. Then return to council for questions, comments, and actions. Their request tonight is to approve the LOI, the Letter of Intent, and provide guidance on the negotiating principles on page four of the staff report. Staff.
Great, thank you. Rye Halpern, Assistant Director, Community Services Department, and with me is Walter Rossman, OMB Director, as well as members of the board of Friends of the JMZ. So tonight, it is with great pleasure that I'm presenting to you the recommendation for this approval of this letter of intent. Few comments on the JMZ, a much beloved institution in our city. The audience of the JMZ is about 150,000 people a year, about a quarter of them live in Palo Alto, about 80% live within 15 miles, and three quarters of them come more than once a year. In terms of education outreach, we are in, many of the local elementary schools serving up to about nine years. We do pro bono lessons in East Palo Alto, and we estimate about 15,000 hours of hands-on lessons a year. In our collections and staffing, we have about 200 animals representing 50 species, about 4,000 objects and specimens, and we do all of this with six full-time staff and 30 part-time staff. This is an important year, because it is the 80th anniversary for the museum, and we started the zoo in 1969, 45 years ago. It's also the 52nd year of support from the Friends of the JMZ. As you might be aware of, since 1997, we have done several studies that have showed that the building is in major, overdue for major renovation. We have done a few different studies that have pointed this out. And for the last 10 years, about, the Friends of JMZ has been interested in a new building. So tonight, what we're coming forward to you with is a letter of intent. The key agreements are, the key points in the letter of intent is that the city and the Friends wish to cooperate in rebuilding the JMZ facility and in the operation of the JMZ for 40 years after construction. We're recommending that we spend the next, up to the next 12 months in negotiation to come up with an agreement for design and construction, as well as operation and management. There's six areas for discussion that we're looking for your input on in your staff report. You'll see these as the negotiating principles. And it has to do with delineating methods for delivery of programs and services, oversight of the construction project, establishing financial and programmatic oversight, stabilization and reduction of the city's financial support for the operation, and the transition of the operation back to the city at the end of, at the end of the 40 years. So with that, our, this is our recommendation. And we would like to open this up now to our Friends of the JMZ, and I'd like to introduce to you Alitha Coleman, who is the chair, very, very dedicated chair of the Friends of JMZ.
Hello, I'm Alitha Coleman. And I have my, the other half of, half of my board is here tonight, and I apologize for the whole board not being here, because we all have young children, except for me, of course. And they're mostly home. And Byrne Beecham, who is normally my cohort in, in crime, is in Australia, because this meeting was moved from two weeks ago. He would normally be here, answering the questions in a, in a much better way than I. So I'm just here to answer questions, as I understand it, all we're doing is asking you to allow us to speak to staff and to talk to them over the next 12 months to see how we can best rebuild the JMZ and talk about possibly taking over the operations.
Thank you, Alitha. And do you want to back up one slide, because you wanted us to look at the elements, the key areas of discussion?
Yes.
And why don't we look at that while we go out to the public? And I have one public comment from Dan Garber. So we'll listen to Dan for three minutes.
We're not leaving.
Yeah, they're not leaving. So, and this isn't my only card on this? Okay, so Dan Garber, there you go.
That's quite a crowd to move out of the way here. I'm here to remind you that the Junior Museum, as you've heard, has been here for quite some time. But there was a period in our history, the city's history, where it was perhaps not remembered all that well. And I got involved with the Junior Museum at a time when, basically, you had to breathe and show up to a meeting, and you were suddenly the president for the next six years. And that was in 1996 or thereabouts, when we first started talking about trying to find ways to improve and potentially replace that. And I want to remind you that having since raised the profile of that institution, which has then been carried on with my predecessors, Virginia and Alitha, it was also strongly supported by staff, starting with Paul Thildgen, which some of you may even remember, followed by Richard James, and throughout all of that, and now Greg Betts, who has been doing yeoman's work all this time, throughout the entire tenure, focused on this institution and the positive things that it brings to this community. So I, as an alumnus of the board, and as a parent of two kids that took full advantage of it, and occasionally, even now, they're significantly taller, my kids will go back and visit the institution, strongly share my desire to see it improved and for this continued conversation with the city and the partnership that's being proposed. So with that, I will give it back to you and the current board.
Well, thank you. And bringing this back to council for questions, comments, and action, Councilmember Berman.
So I've had the pleasure of being the liaison to the Junior Museum and Zoo ever since I first got elected to council two years ago, and easily, you know, a lot of cool stuff has happened in those two years, but, but easily, the coolest thing that happened was hanging out with Sequoia the Bald Eagle at, at the Junior Museum and Zoo a couple of months onto, onto my term on council. And, you know, it's been a pleasure to, to attend a handful of your, your board meetings. I haven't been to all of them. But the energy, the ideas, the professionalism, the, you know, the, it's just infectious how, how, you know, excited you guys all are about the, the really great renovation plans that you guys have, but also how seriously you're taking it, and how realistically you're taking it, and how, you know, it's not all pie in the sky, you guys have, have a plan and you're executing to it. And I don't know that now's the time to get into a lot of those details, since we're just talking about a letter of intent, but I'm looking forward to watching this, this progress. And so I will happily move that the council approve a letter of intent by which the city and the Friends of the Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo will collaborate to develop agreements for the building of a new and enhanced Junior Museum and Zoo facility and the operation of the new facility for up to 40 years, and staff, and staff seeks the council's guidance and approval on the guiding negotiation, and approve the guiding negotiation principle, principles noted on page four of our staff packet.
Do you like to speak to your question?
I just, you know, very briefly, which is, the Junior Museum and Zoo is such an asset, not only to Palo Altons, but also to the, I mean, the, the regional community around us. And it's such a great opportunity. I went there when I was growing up in Palo Alto, and, and have a lot of fond memories of that. And, but it hasn't, you know, but the community's changed a lot, and the Junior Museum and Zoo has, has tried valiantly to keep up, but there comes a point where you need a new facility to be able to do that and really service the community for, for decades to come. And we're definitely at that point. And so I think it's important that we move forward with that.
Councilmember Burt, would you like to speak with your, to your second?
Yes. So I want to thank our staff, and in particular, the members of the Junior Museum and Zoo Friends Board, who have been working for years to bring us closer to this point. This is another great example of a public-private partnership opportunity in the city that leverages our resources and is going to make a great facility and institution even better. And as somebody who went there as a kid in, I think, 1959, and still has memories of how great it was, Dan Garber spoke about how it was relatively unchanged until the mid-'90s, and I think he's right. It was from '59 to '95, it, it hadn't changed a lot. And since then, it's really had a rebirth. And this will allow the facility to catch up with all of the dynamics that have been going on there, and exhibits, what we've already seen, and some great improvements in the zoo portion, and really allow a building that isn't as good as what we have there in the, in the whole operation of the, of the museum and zoo, and to do it through a collaboration with, with the community. And I also want to say that when I was a kid, we didn't live in Palo Alto, and this was a great treat to come and see it. And we have been fortunate to have that recognition of the value of this asset acknowledged by many members who are, contribute greatly financially and through their labor to the museum and zoo, who do not necessarily reside here and yet are contributing to this. And, and it's, it's great, the more kids, the merrier, who enjoy it. And there's nothing quite like a Junior Museum and Zoo event when there are two kids, 200 kids, running around just ecstatic over what they're seeing and doing. So thanks again, and, oh, Mark, I do have to say, I don't know if they gave you the real treat, which for me was Rufus the Bobcat around my neck, purring, but he went a bit too far when he started nibbling on my earlobe.
I didn't get that treatment.
No, he's gotten Henri since then, I think, and, and they don't give that treat anymore. All right, thanks a lot.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I just want to say thanks a lot. I remember taking my kids there, and I remember taking my grandkids there, and enthusiasm was the same across generations. I also, not very often we see a proposal that not only provides a major capital investment, but also is encouraging to take over some of the operating costs from us. So that's some real benefits. I guess it's striking that you have a huge number of visitors each year, 150,000, but only 25% are from the city. But I know you have a very active school program that certainly is beneficial to all the kids in the Palo Alto schools, and gives them a perspective on the animal life around them. Just a question about impact on the park. I guess you are in a restricted space, and my understanding is you're not intending to impinge on the park in any way, is that right? Rinconada Park?
Well, that's a pretty detailed question. I think John knows the answer to that, but as I understand it, we already impinge a little bit on the park. And we've been working with the master planning for Rinconada Park, so that every, we are part of that larger plan with a slightly larger footprint, so that we can accommodate what we already do. So we're rightsizing, as the term would be.
Right. So I guess that's a, a key thing that will come back if there is any issue on that.
But we've been working very closely with, is it Peter Jensen? Yes. In making sure that whatever we do, is, there's, there's no conflict, but we're in absolute coordination with the master plan in the park.
And we'll be coming in a couple of weeks to you for approval on the EIR report, on the EIR for Rinconada Park, including the JMZ expansion.
We're paying for half of that.
That's coming December 1, yes.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you. I will support the motion. I want to commend everyone for their hard work and the details in front of us. My only, I just have one question. In the, in the middle of the motion, it talks about guiding negotiation principles. And my only question or concern about that statement is it appears as if the following list is a combination of action items and goals. And so I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. I think that the guiding negotiation principles, it goes beyond that, because it really is direct action items, as well as sort of some generic goals. If people, if people are comfortable with that, I'll go with it. But it just seems, it's a little odd in which, you know, in other guiding principles that we've developed, and I can rattle off different things that we've done, these appear, the, the language and the, and the way they're presented is very different. I'd just like a quick response on that, please.
Walter Rossman, Office of Management Budget Director. Councilmember Price, the intent of these guiding principles is to give the council a sense of where staff feels we need to really negotiate with the Friends to establish agreement with them for the operation, as well as the investment of the capital infrastructure. And so with that, so the council is more aware and the public what kind of conversations we plan to have until we come back to the public again with a final agreement, and to the council closed session, most likely.
And if you could just repeat the last, the last couple of sentences you said?
Sure. So that as we go through the negotiations with the Friends, there may be a reason to come back to the council in closed session to address certain negotiating terms or contract terms, and to also give the public a sense what kind of negotiations we plan to have with the Friends. So as outlined here, whether it's the financial structure for the next 40 years, whether it's the partnership we plan to have with them about the programming of the JMZ museum, the kind of programs offered to the Palo Alto residents, as well as to the schools, and what kind of interchange we plan to have with them as the JMZ evolves. The JMZ will be very different, as you talked about already today, than the tomorrow, in 10 years, maybe 20 years, than it's today, and it's very important for us that we have a good And it's very important for us that we have a continued relationship with this established structure with the Friends as the JMC evolves. So we still keep this asset a great asset for this community and its residents.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, thank you for coming forward with this. And it was my first or second year, I was liaison, I think it was first year, to Junior Museum and Zoo and enjoyed that experience and do enjoy visits to the zoo. Haven't been there for a little while, but have been there a number of times. It's a great facility and obviously it's very successful if you have 150,000 visitors a year. So kudos and hats off to that. I do have, Councilmember Schmidt brought up something that I'd like to follow up on too, which is, oh, and by the way, before I forget it, to Greg Betts has been involved for a very long time and Dan Garber referenced that. Wasn't it quite clear, though, have you been involved for all 80 years?
Shot at three.
Okay, okay. So on the letter of intent on packet page 730, it says that grant the Friends a license or permission for access to and the non-exclusive use and possession of the park's construction site, including within Rinconada Park, in order that the Friends may develop this area in order to improve, replace, and rebuild the JMC to provide enhanced levels of service. And later on in the one, two, third paragraph on that page, starting in the second line, it says the council will be required to adopt a park improvement ordinance in regard to the project for any portion of the project that will be constructed within Rinconada Park as required by the city charter and the Palo Alto municipal code. So hearing that the project is being planned in coordination with the Rinconada Park master plan, that's great. That's good. But that doesn't necessarily address building on dedicated parkland. And that's not a small issue in this community. So I don't know, maybe the city attorney can respond to this, but I'm not understanding how it could be a park improvement ordinance if there is a new element of structure placed on dedicated parkland, that being Rinconada Park.
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. So we will look at this, but it's our understanding that the structure does fit within the type of permissible activity that does work for a park or recreation facility. It is a park-related structure, and we do have many of those on our parks, and the council authorizes them by park improvement ordinance. So we would provide for that to be done here.
So when this, thank you for that. When this comes back, if staff can provide, you know, clear language around that, that would be really helpful because it'll help.
I think that was the intention of the earlier comment, but we will.
Okay, that would be really most helpful. Thank you. Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. I also am really pleased to see this come forward. My kids also really, really enjoyed the Junior Museum and Zoo. And when they went to Walter Hayes, there was lots of programs that they went through, and it was really a great experience for them. So I strongly support the Junior Museum and Zoo. I did have some questions about the guiding principles, similar to Councilmember Price a little bit. So they're the ones like delineate methods for appropriate public and city input to programs and services. I mean, that makes sense. What you're telling us is that, and this is my understanding, is that you're going to work out, you know, what the role of the input, of what kind of programs and services, how much the board makes the decision, how much the city makes the decision, right, of what's going to be. And that's a point of negotiation of what programs are going to be offered. Is that correct? I guess I want to understand what we're doing.
I think, what I understand is what we're, what you want, what we want you to approve tonight is to stop, let us start talking to the city on a formal basis.
So I actually want staff to respond because what we're supposed to be doing here is giving staff direction on how to negotiate with you. And I want to make sure that I understand the directions so that if we do go into closed session, people say, well, these are the six guiding principles. And so I want to understand exactly what we're trying to, what we're trying to do and why these are necessary to put in here.
Can I just take a minute here to take back the chair? Councilmember Burt, would you like to?
Thank you. I'm so fond of this Junior Museum and Zoo and Children's Library and other things that when we opted to move to our home now 20 years ago, we moved to within what I believe is 500 feet of the museum and zoo, which as a result, I believe I should recuse myself from the voting on this. So I'm going to bow out and rescind my second.
I'll pick up the second, but I think you have to leave the room too, so.
You won't be able to take the no-your-newts test also later.
I know. He's influenced us already on this, so. So carry on, Councilmember Scharf.
Sure.
Keep going.
I guess, I'm just thinking, no, I don't live within 500 feet.
I know.
Does it matter that my kids, like, went to school within 500 feet?
He's pretty close.
You know, I do bike within 500 feet. Okay. So delineate methods for appropriate public and city input. So what you're thinking about there, Staff, is how much input you have versus how much input the board has on programming, right?
That is correct. And how can we establish in the final contract, assuming we achieve that, that what kind of interactions over the next 40 years staff will have with the Friends to ensure that we have input from city staff about programming and other programs offered at the JMC, since it will be in control of the Friends, as well as how the public can provide input to this process? So it's really a long-term view.
It's about shaping the public-private partnership, finding the customized fit.
So it's a balance, and that's what we're going to be looking for.
Right.
And so this is more of an area of which we're going to have a discussion as opposed to a guiding principle. That's really what it struck me as, that there's no, we're not giving you any direction of where to strike that balance.
No, you're not. And obviously would ultimately be expressed, you know, in some particular language in an agreement itself that would be more specific, obviously, than something else.
And again, on oversight and cooperation, obviously, we'd want some oversight and that, but we're not sending you any direction as to where that balance goes, right? So when you come to council in closed session, we won't be saying, oh, let's go look at this and we want maximum or anything like this. It's just, so these are really not guiding principles.
They're really the, yeah, they're really discussion points. They're key discussion.
They're key discussion points?
Yes.
So where I, I guess I thought maybe we were giving direction, we stopped being a key discussion point that seemed to be giving direction, was stabilize and reduce long-term the city's financial support for the JMC's operation. That seemed more like a direction and a guiding principle than a discussion point. And I actually had concerns about that. I could imagine situations where we may, first of all, is it not stable, our support of the, I mean, is our, I haven't seen the budget wildly fluctuate. It seems stable already to me. So why are we looking to stabilize it?
Sure. Okay, I can speak. What happens with a budget annually, as you can imagine, is we project it forward, how our budget is increasing over the next 10, 20 years. And as a six full-time staff we have in the JMC and part-time staff, the budget is increasing annually primarily due to our benefits costs.
So all I got to say is, is there a single department in which?
No, they're all affected by the same issue.
I mean, everything.
Sure.
So, I mean, I think that the, I don't want to nitpick here, but it does seem to me that the JMC is stable, that it goes up with the same rate that other departments and other city costs go up. And it's not, and this seems to imply that there's some other issue here.
No, it's really, I think why we included that is to just say that the benefit for the city is the reducing long-term city's financial support.
Well, obviously we want to do that if possible. So that, so we could say reduce long-term the city's financial support. But do we even want to do that? I mean, say, say you come to us and you say, you know, we're going to have to cut programs to meet this goal after looking at that. And I would say, I wouldn't support that. And now you have in here, it's one of our methods, and people would say, well, you voted for that to, you know, to reduce the long-term costs. So I, I mean, to me, it's a balance. It's a balance of everything. And I'm just concerned that, you know, everything else in here seems to be a point of discussion. This seems to be directional. And if it's not meant that way, then I think we should take it out or we should say, you know, balance long-term costs and financial support versus programs or something. I just don't want to be prescriptive without understanding what the trade-offs are.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, and we could change the language. I think that the overall perspective for these points here was to acknowledge that right now, the asset that we have is obviously by far predominantly a city asset that is going to be turned over to another group who's going to continue to, I mean, going to expand and improve this and operate it on behalf of the city. But we want to ensure that the city protects the stake or the interest that it has in it already. And so, I mean, I think for, this is a particular conclusion, what we want to do is we want to ensure that the city has a continuing voice related to its position regarding the long-term financial support for the JMC operation. It could be, we want to say, we're willing to put more money into it, may say we want to kind of have a voice in being able to control costs if we got to that point. We don't want to lose, I mean, we have some control now, clearly. The council can end up saying, I'm sorry, Jim, I know you wanted to double the staff, but we're just not going to do it. We don't want to necessarily just get swept up into some things without the city being able to sort of have a stake in the outcome.
So I really liked what you just said. Unfortunately, the language doesn't capture that. How would you?
Can we just amend the recommendation to just say analyze the city's financial support, long-term support for the JMC's operation? Analyze the city's long-term financial support for the JMC operation.
Would that be acceptable?
It makes you happy, it makes me happy.
Makes me happy.
And, you know, I think that they're analyzed, I think that's fine for now. I think obviously that analysis could inform some other language we'd want to put in the specific agreement. But again, we're just moving the ball downfield here.
You good, Councilmember Scharf?
Yeah, I'm good.
Councilmember Klein?
In the spirit of Roger Smith, I have to say we're wasting time right now. This is a letter of intent, emphasize intent. As all lawyers on the council know, this is not binding in any way legally on the city.
With all due respect, Councilmember Klein?
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you, Councilmember Scharf. The staff really can negotiate to change the color of the building from, to orange and bring it back to us and, of course, have it rejected. But actually, I would have been comfortable if they didn't have any of these negotiating principles. Because I think all it's done is to create a time sync for us. When they come back with some parameters, then the council at that time can say, that's good, bad, or indifferent, or they need to do something else. Trying to set forth in advance of negotiations, it seems to me, is not a good use of the council's time. But since I have the floor, I wasn't going to just repeat what everybody else has said, but I am now. As somebody who's now my second generation of kids, children, grandchildren, step-granddaughter who've used the museum and zoo, I'm certainly supportive of this. I really enjoyed my recent trip there to hear the plans. I think they're very exciting, and I think we ought to move forward. And trying to anticipate where negotiation's going to go is not what the council should be doing.
Mister, madam, thank you. I think that staff just suggested, I mean, to avoid this confusion, would it be appropriate just to strike recommendation B in the staff recommendation and just leave it on this letter of intent? Because B says staff seeks the council's guidance and approval on the guiding negotiation principles noted on page four below. I mean, rather than, you know, I mean, one option is just to strike that for now, we've had this discussion, and push on. We, you know, one of the reasons for, was being able to have some public discussion with the council to realize that there's some implications to this agreement, they could take a lot of different forms. As a matter of fact, there will be things outside of these issues that we'll be bringing back.
Is that okay with you, Councilmember?
That's fine with me and, you know, probably a lesson learned for down the road of, you know, what we need to do at what stages of the process, to the extent there's ever a process like this ever again.
And there will be.
So we're going to strike it, so it's now just going to read for everyone's clarification. Counsel's approval of a letter of intent by which the city and the Friends of the Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo will collaborate to develop agreements for the building of a new and enhanced Junior Museum and Zoo facility and the operation of the new facility for up to 40 years. So no guiding principles.
Right, and get rid of the colon and the number one, comma, six.
Yep.
There's no number two. Okay, and the second, or we'll agree with you.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Is there anything further, Councilmember Klein?
Mayor Shepard, I would really like to have you hear the names of the board members who are here. And also, I just want to acknowledge the director of the JMC, who is also here tonight, John Aiken, also does an excellent job on this. So if you could introduce yourself.
Let me introduce my board, or my half of my board here. I have Steve Reller, who is the son of Carolyn and Bill Reller, well-known community philanthropist in Palo Alto. I have, this is Paul, but he's on our development committee, and he is wonderful, and he is a Palo Alto resident. And Tim Stitt, who is with Vance Brown and helping us with the design of the, the design of the new building. I have Jane Wrightina, who is a new board member and a PR and marketing expert, Palo Alto resident. And I have, oh, sorry, I have Robin Reynolds here, who is also a very active Palo Alto resident, who is a former member of the Oakland Zoo Board and who participated in their negotiations and is assisting us with their accreditation. I have an absolutely fabulous board. The other members live mostly in Woodside and Portola Valley, and also they're not here because they have young children. I forgot, I have Steve Emsley, who formerly worked for the city of Palo Alto and is committed to helping us shepherd everything through in the construction process. I'm really very, very lucky.
Well, thank you very much. And John, I didn't recognize you without an eagle hanging off of your arm, so welcome to the in-house of the city. And I too, my grandson loves it there. He loves turning everything, the water, the electrical, the, all the stuff that's going on down there right now is really fantastic for the kids, and they all get along fairly well. I did just want to mention, I know that there might be some challenges on this. There's parking overflow, might go into the neighborhoods, just want to make sure that you keep everybody well-informed as you go forward so that everything's transparent and above board. I want to commend you for this effort. When Mitchell Park Library opened and I got that sneak peek of it, the impression that I get is that Palo Alto's starting to make an impact on their infrastructure in such a way that we are owning it, and it's not just leftover World War II, whatever we could put together and throw beige paint on it and make it work. And it's really a coming of age, in my opinion. And so it's inspiring to me to see this and to, once again, be here to watch a new adventure for one of our real organs of the city. The Art Center was the first to break the ground on this. It was a difficult transition to try to figure out how to get private dollars into a public entity. Oh, they want me to stop talking. So, but anyway, I want to thank you for this. It's really an honor to be here tonight and to be able to vote on this. So thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and vote. And this carries with Vice Mayor Niss out and Councilmember Burt not participating, and somebody has to go there. Yeah, you're ready, Pat. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 21, which is, actually, it's, I should do 10 o'clock check-in because we are a little after 10 o'clock and we have two items to take up. I think we can get them through and then we go into closed session. So this is, item number 21 was on consent calendar a couple of weeks ago.
We just did vote.
Do you want to vote again?
Vote on that.
Oh, I'm, okay.
Oh, I'm, okay. Sorry. Thank you. Do we have any announcements?
Yes, we do. We have a majority for the last Architectural Review Board position. We have Councilmember Berman voting for Kai Kim, Councilmember Burt voting for Kenneth Hu, Councilmember Holman voting for Kenneth Hu, Councilmember Klein voting for Kai Kim, Councilmember Price voting for Kai Kim, Councilmember Scharf voting for Kai Kim, Councilmember Schmidt voting for Kenneth Hu, and Mayor Shepard voting for Kai Kim. So, Kai Kim with five votes gives the last position.
He's seated. Okay, well, thank you very much. I'm sorry this was so clumsy. Moving on to item number 21.
Speaker of the House.
Yes?
Speaking of our schedule, since I have a medical procedure tomorrow morning, I would really, really, really like this not to go past 11:30, and I'm not sure whether we're going to get these three items in before 11:30.
Can we take the performance, see how long it takes?
I'm just sort of giving everybody...
This was a consent, I mean, in the second item, we voted on with consent, and it's been brought back for action for some reason, so.
Let's have everybody quit.
Why don't we do a...
We can do both items by the time Councilmember needs to leave.
But then we go into closed session, and that's what, he wants to leave at 11:30, and closed session is, I think, important. So, let's take one item up, and then we'll take a look at how the second item is, and then we might have to postpone it. So, is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah, let's try to do all three.
All right. We're going to push through, then. I'll talk fast. In February, council approved the conceptual framework for the Our Palo Alto, a community dialogue about our future, community conversation, which is a public engagement program. Staff requires professional service to assist and continue to build on the outreach efforts that go beyond city hall and into the community on topics such as demographics, growth, housing, visioning, using, supporting data and facts. In June, council approved funding for this program in the fiscal year 2015 budget. This item was pulled from consent calendar a few weeks ago, and we will now turn it over to staff for their report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Shepard, and Councilmembers. Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director. I'm joined by Claudia Keith, the city's Chief Communications Officer. The item before you is a two-year contract with a consultant who would assist us in community engagement and communication efforts related to Our Palo Alto. As the mayor indicated, Our Palo Alto is an organizing framework for ideas, action, and design, and the concept was to get community engaged and involved in a conversation about the city's future by engaging on these three types of initiatives over the next several years. At the time, we all talked about Our Palo Alto. I think we all understood that it will really only be successful if it contributes to increasing the capacity of city staff to engage in communication efforts as a regular part of their business. This contract will assist Claudia and my staff in events and outreach related to Our Palo Alto, but will also grow capacity in the Planning Department to engage with the community in the course of our regular business. So, we've tried to answer the questions that came up when this item was on consent, and we'd be happy to answer any additional questions that the council has this evening.
Thank you. Clerk, do I have any comment cards from the public on this? Okay, there are no. So, I'm going to bring it back to council, and Councilmember Holman?
So, I'll try to just jump in here. The questions that you saw here are from me, and I continue to have many of the same questions, because I didn't really feel like the response has answered the questions. And, you know, question one was about what the, this isn't necessarily a big deal, but what's the company done previously for Palo Alto? It says the firm has not done any other work for the city, but when I looked at this previously, when it was on consent before, they have City of Palo Alto on their list of clients. So, that's why I was making that inquiry. The, hang on, here's a second. The, have the other, Our Palo Alto contractors collaborated with Flint previously? And I didn't, again, feel like the response answered the question. What I was trying to discern was if, you know, we have approved several contracts for other contracting firms to help with the process of Our Palo Alto, from the planning perspective and all of that. What I was trying to find out was if any of those entities had worked with Flint. And the answer doesn't really respond to that. So, is there a response to that? Have any of those entities worked with Flint previously, and what was their experience?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Holman, if we didn't respond to the question as you intended it. We've engaged one additional contractor to help us with event planning related to Our Palo Alto, and that person has not worked with Flint, to my, to my knowledge. There are other consultants that are on board to work on the comprehensive plan update and other specific projects that, that fall under that Our Palo Alto banner, I guess you would say. And I don't know whether any of them have worked with, with this entity. I personally have worked with Kendall Flint when she was with another company, and know her to be a well-respected, completely competent contractor who does this kind of work for planning and public agencies, and does very good work. So, we feel confident that she can discharge the responsibilities that were included in the scope of work.
So, obviously, thank you for that. And the reason for the question was, I was just wanting to know how we were going to be integrating that. The third question had to do with the community task force, and if they had any, any role in identifying or selection of Flint. And, by the way, just to be very, very clear, this has nothing to do with Flint. It has to do with our procedures and what our plan is. It's nothing specific about Flint. I want to be very clear about that. So, this seems to be, the response seems to lead that the leadership group is over here doing this, and I understood that the leadership group was to support public outreach, and that's kind of what I understand that Flint will be doing as well. But it doesn't seem like, based on this response, that they're going to be really much communicating with each other, so it seems disjointed to me.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Holman, for the opportunity to explain this further. I think what we're trying to say here is that we have a comprehensive plan consultant who's under contract to do community engagement and to work with the leadership group as needed to engage the community in the comprehensive plan update. The comprehensive plan is only one aspect of the Our Palo Alto initiative. I think Kendall Flint will be available to help as needed, but we do not think that that is going to be the primary activity in which she's going to be engaged. We think she's going to be more engaged on other aspects of Our Palo Alto, including events like the early workshops we had around ideas and conversations, and on aspects of communication that relate directly to the Planning Department and our desire to engage with the community in the day-to-day course of our business. So, I hope that clarifies, it's, we don't want to just pile the comprehensive plan process with multiple layers of consultants. I don't think that would be an effective strategy. We have resources to support that effort. We're looking for resources to support other efforts under the Our Palo Alto banner.
So, you're saying that as Our Palo Alto is being identified now, it's not just the comprehensive plan update, it's also communications with the public about planning processes and initiatives or projects?
Yeah, if the, if the council will recall, the framework for the Our Palo Alto initiative had three kind of conceptual components about ideas, design, and action. And the design piece is really dealing with the comprehensive plan. The action, we're looking at different initiatives related to parking and TDM and other implementation tools. And the ideas portion was a much broader engagement and outreach effort, in some ways, not always even immediately designed to connect to, say, a specific thing like the comprehensive plan. And what, one of the reasons I was very supportive of this proposal when it came forward in the budget was that while the Our Palo Alto initiative, particularly around this ideas portion, needs more support and effort, but there still are linkages to these other parts, the Planning Department as a whole needs some capacity-building support through that process, but through other things that the planning staff does to enhance their own skills as employees in engagement and outreach. Think of just the things we've done on, how do we give better even information to the public about land use projects visually by changing the design of the notices and those things that we've put out? So, to me, this seemed like a very cost-efficient way over a two-year period to bring on staff support to enhance the broader abilities of the planning staff. Heck, it could even ultimately extend to how we do presentations before the council on some of those, some items and those sorts of things. So, I think, I think that, I think you should not see it, as Hillary was saying, as, as another consultant overlay related to just, say, the comprehensive plan.
So, since you mentioned this and getting communication out to the public from the Planning Department, I do want to compliment you on the reports and updates that you're getting out to the community right now. I think they're very helpful, clear, and having photographs helps immensely, so big kudos on that. And the ideas portion of what we're just talking about, I thought that was a part of, I'd understood that as being a part of the comprehensive plan, because if it isn't, then isn't that a disjointed thing?
It is, but it's broader than that also.
And then, the, the last question was staff report, saying that this was, was approved in the staff report 4899 on June 16, and the response basically says, "Yeah, it was there." I read it, and I do not find reference to this. Now, that being said, the exhibits are not available online, so maybe it's in the exhibits, but it's not referenced in the description, and it's a very long description, and I didn't find it in the staff report either, no reference to this, so.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Holman. I apologize, then. It was definitely raised in the Finance Committee, and I think when the budget came to the full council as a key element of my department's budget in this fiscal year, this was identified as a project we were interested in undertaking for the cost of $175,000. What we're bringing, what we're bringing to you today is a two-year contract, so we've spread that over two years, but this was specifically identified in our presentations to the Finance Committee and to the council.
Okay, again, I just, I couldn't find it, so, okay, I'll stop with questions right now.
Councilmember Klein?
Well, I'm a little bit torn on this one, since several times I've expressed my worries about whether we're really going to reach out in the comprehensive plan to areas of the community that we don't normally hear from, such as youth, by youth, I mean, young people in their twenties, young families, thirties and forties, and the Asian community and seniors. And, but then I have to say that I was surprised that, I was pleasantly surprised that we finally reached out to get some professional help, because I don't think that's necessarily in the Planning Department's expertise. So, I'm feeling good about that, but then the price tag, I must say, surprised me. And I know this is a not-to-exceed contract, meaning that we don't, that you don't have to spend the entire $175,000, but I don't see any budget as to how much you really expect to pay. And, of course, I'm, as anybody who's been here for a while, you get to be cynical and know that not-to-exceed contracts frequently end up being precisely what the top amount is. So, speak to me on two things, please. One is, what is the budget? And two, what plans do they have to reach out to the communities, the, these communities that I mentioned that we hear from rarely? And if I might add on that, what's their expertise and experience in reaching out to such communities?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Klein. As I indicated, this was included in this year's budget for a total cost.
That's fine. I heard that, but I'm agreeing with Councilmember Holman. It may have been included in the budget, but that doesn't mean that we can't give it very close scrutiny now.
I understand, but I thought one of your questions was, "What's the budget?" So, I was responding to that question. But this is a contract that will allow us to do task orders with this contractor up to that amount.
Yes.
We expect to spend that amount over a two-year period, inviting this contractor to help us with very specific tasks. As I indicated to Councilmember Holman, we don't think that a lot of those tasks will be related to the comprehensive plan update.
I heard all that, but, but as to the other parts of the planning process, we also want to reach out to those communities, because we don't hear from them in very significant numbers on any of the planning aspects that, that we have underway. So, I really want to hear, what are we getting for our money? What's their, what's their plan? And how do we know? I don't get any feel yet as to a sense of confidence that this is really going to be a lot better, and are we really getting our money's worth?
Well, Councilmember Klein, right now, we do not have this contract. We don't have the ability to draw on this resource. If we enter into this contract, we will have a professional who's adept in communication around planning and public agency issues, who has experience working in a wide variety of communities, and who will be on-call to help us with the event planning and outreach that we hope will build under the Our Palo Alto banner, the expertise and ability of our staff to reach out to all segments of the community, including those that you mentioned.
No, I understand that. Let me, let me try it a different, what Hillary's saying is, in order to move to the next level or the next depth and breadth of outreach, we need more capacity. The council's saying, "Well, tell us more specifically how you would do those." She's saying, "We need this capacity in addition to everything else we're doing to design that." Is there a different way for us to commit to coming back to the council after the fact? You know what I mean? At some point, whatever it is. I mean, I don't mean to say this person's on retainer, but in a lot of ways, we're asking for a not-to-exceed capacity. We're going to be bringing this person on, Hillary's going to be asking her to, in the firm, to do this, to do that, whatever. You know, we could develop a, I mean, one of the initial things we could do is to develop our expectations of how we would be deploying some of the work in this way, and be able to come back to the council and share that information and report to you in a way that, I mean, gives you a sense that now we have a clear picture on this, and it's not just saying, "Well, $175,000, we'll see after two years and get a after-action report on what happened." And I think we could figure out some way to do that, but I think we've got a, I mean, we're going to make the road by walking here a little bit, so we've got to get the capacity here to help us design what it is that needs to be done. So, I mean, if we have to say, whatever it is, "Before you've spent more than $50,000, we brought you back a report or something," you know, identifying exactly what we're going to do for council review, would hope you'd be okay with that, if that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Scharf?
So, I also think this, this feels very fuzzy to me. When I look through the scope of services, I have no idea what the person's actually doing. I mean, I see they're attending breakfasts, luncheons, dinners, community meetings. I mean, it just seems like this is a big PR effort for $175,000. It's a lot of money. So, I guess I'll just make a motion that we don't do this. I guess I'll have a second?
I'm going to second that, so we can talk about it at least.
Okay, wait.
So...
If nobody makes a motion, then we won't do it, but you want to talk about not doing it, is this, is what this is about?
Well, I figured that Councilmember Klein wants to move through this quickly, and I figured the easiest way to get through this is to make a motion that we don't do it.
No, we've got three more lights, but okay.
Someone can make us up to a motion.
Councilmember Scharf, would you speak to your motion?
Yes. So, $175,000 is a lot of money. It's unclear at all of what we get for doing this. It's unclear what kind of metrics staff, how would I know if this was successful or not? How would I have any idea? So, I'm not asking a question, it's rhetorical for right now, you can answer in a second. So, given that there seems to be no metrics, no clear scope of what this is, I think sometimes it's worth just saying no. And, you know, it's always easy to say, "Well, let's, you know, let's have them come back and tell us what they're going to do with it after, you know, what..." But I just don't see that. I see it just simply as, as a lot of money, and it's something we don't need to spend, and I'm not sure, at the end of the day, what we're going to get for it, and I don't think we're going to get much for it. So, now, I know you wanted to answer that question of, "What are the metrics, and how would I know if I'm going to get something for this?" And how would I, how would I know we had success?
Thank you, Councilmember Scharf, and maybe Claudia will help me with this, but I think we could certainly... I think we could certainly bring back to you metrics to demonstrate how that this contract had been effective in helping us to reach out to the community. Councilmember Holman mentioned the e-newsletter we put out. I'll just tell you that that takes an incredible amount of time on the part of my staff, staff in the city manager's office, to put that thing together, and our thought was, if we had a professional who could help us organize a system where that thing was generated almost automatically, because our notices were improved, and the quality of our thinking ahead and timing to put those notices together with pictures, so they could just drop right into that electronic newsletter, this, that's the kind of thing this person could help us with. But without this kind of person, it continues to be an extraordinary effort, taking away from other initiatives of the department and the city, every time we have to put together a communication tool like that. That's just one example. And for that particular example, absolutely, we can give you metrics of the number of people who click on that newsletter, and how deep they go to review the projects in that newsletter. I can give you what those metrics are for the last volume, issue we put out, and for the volume six months from now, when this person is on board and helping us disseminate that information. So that's just one example, but I, I hope that responds to your question.
That's a helpful response, but I actually think metrics should be given before we vote to do it. I mean, if you had a list in the scope of services that said, these are the things the person's going to do, this is what it's going to look like, fine, but here, these are open-ended tasks. It seems that you can call this person up and have them do whatever, to do something that you think needs doing at that time, and I have no sense of what that's going to be.
Councilmember Holman, could you speak to your second?
Yeah, it's, this is a difficult one, because I absolutely want to support Hillary, I want to support you, and I want to support planning staff, and my challenge is, I think in how this is written, and I think the metrics is a good idea, but also you need to have some latitude. It's like something comes up, you need to be able to do it. And yet, how this is presented causes me some, some challenge. So, I'm looking for a way how, how I, as an individual council member, can support you and can support the planning department, and yet feel good about an expenditure that seems to be kind of vague. And where I have some challenge with this is, to be perfectly frank, is the, now, this company is, and someone in this position has not been on board, but the outreach to the community, I mentioned earlier, I think there seems to be some kind of a disconnect between getting ideas and the comprehensive plan, it seems like those ought to be integrated. But the outreach to the community seems like it has been so general that we're kind of like grasping at things out here. Maybe that's the staff's intention, or city manager's intention, so it's kind of a free-form thing. It's, and so we talked early on about the Our Palo Alto and comprehensive plan, and referring to the SOFA plan that Councilmember Burt and I were involved in, and that was more structured. Maybe it's the kind of metrics that Councilmember Scharf was speaking of, but it was more structured, so it was like, give us all your input on traffic, give us all your input on, you know, FARs and buildings, give us all your input. So it was more structured, so it wasn't just scattershot. And I think that's, for me so far, that's the frustration I'm having with, with the process so far, and it's what I'm kind of reading into this, right or wrong, based on experience to this date. So that's the challenge I'm having, so I'm looking for a way how I can support you, Hillary, and support the planning department in things that you do need, and clearly that you do need, and yet I'm having trouble with this contract. So, I'm hoping we can get to some kind of resolution on that.
I've got five more colleagues that want to speak to this, so let's get through this. Councilmember Berman?
So I'm worried that we're throwing the, the baby out with the bathwater a little bit. So let me ask a couple of questions about Ms. Flint, who, taking a little bit of a look at her website, so some of these are a bit rhetorical, but does she, would, does staff feel like she would provide competent, independent group facilitation?
Yes, I think that's one of Ms. Flint's skills.
Does staff feel like she has expertise in survey design, implementation, and analysis in order to accurately understand resident opinions?
I've never worked with her directly on a resident's survey, but I think that's within the, her toolkit, you know, I think we could work with her on that kind of input device.
So I got those two skill sets in particular from John Geisland, I might be butchering his last names, op-ed in this weekend's Palo Alto Weekly. So John participated in our RPP stakeholder group, and he wrote a, quite an informative op-ed where he offered up suggestions for how we improve that. He said that's a great thing to have, but there are a lot of ways that it could have been better, and those were two areas in particular. Recommendation number one, ensure that competent, independent group facilitation is offered to future groups, because I guess the person we used for the RPP stakeholder group didn't work out so well. And recommendation number three was, the city needs to acquire expertise in survey design, implementation, and analysis in order to more accurately understand resident opinions. So I agree with colleagues that this is very vague, and, and I think can be much stronger, it can be much more well-defined as to kind of some of the things that Ms. Flint and her company are going to be doing. I'd rather see us make that contract better when there's been a clear need by, or a clear, you know, we've gotten clear input from our residents who have participated in these processes that we've set up and that we want to encourage more of, on ways, on areas that we're falling short, and we shouldn't expect our current staff to have expertise in all of these different things. Our staff, you know, is focused on some things, and, and I think we're asking them to work outside of their level of comfort, and that's a disservice to the entire community. So, I don't know that, I, I think not doing this is the wrong outcome. I think if there's a way to make this better, I would be much more inclined to support that. I'm open to suggestions, I don't want to rewrite a, a contract on the fly, but I, I think if we're asking staff to reach out in a more structured manner to our residents to get their feedback, and if we're getting frustrated when we don't get the feedback that we feel like we were asking for, we need to give staff some tools to actually do that, or else we're just being totally unfair to them. So I'm going to oppose the motion.
Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I also will be not voting for the motion that's before us. I, I just, I feel as if, with the experience you've both had in terms of community outreach, and you've done many contracts with many consultants over the years, I think it's important to give you greater flexibility, and with the understanding, there's a lot of sensitivity about the scope of services as, as written. It is, it is a little bit loose, it is a little bit general, but in fact, it gives you the ability to be a little bit more nimble, and to be responsive, and to, to work with a potential consultant to refine precisely the tasks that they will be asked to do. And I would imagine that as those tasks are better defined, et cetera, that that will be a deliberate and important discussion you will have. My concern is, if we don't move on this now, you are losing time, and you are losing the, the cadence that has been building over the course of the work. I mean, the editorial that, or the opinion piece that was noted, I concur, there were a lot of very good observations. I, I have no problem with saying, to ask the staff to use that as a guiding point in terms of a refinement of the discussion with a consultant. You, and Hillary, you have worked with this individual before, and you know of other cities that have had, you know, experiences with this consultant?
Yes, we took this contract through our regular procurement process and interviewed this team and two other teams. All of the teams provided references, and we, you know, were able to talk to them about prior projects and, and clients that they had worked for.
And the only other observation I would make is, when I've looked at scope of services over the years, unless the RFP requests that a performance measures and criteria be embedded in the proposal, often that's not the case. And sometimes, in the second round of discussion, that is something that, you know, the, the professional staff has the ability to refine and to work on this. The other issue that's, that's bothering me at this moment is the fact that we have already approved this in the budget, we gave you a direction, we gave you the opportunity to do this, you've come back with a specific, you know, some, some information around the scope of services and what this would be, and now it's as if some people are putting the brakes on and say, well, no, 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 no. I feel if we keep reinventing, revisiting these issues, we will definitely make the challenges for our staff get more complicated and more convoluted. I think we should defer to your judgment, you've heard our concerns, and, and move forward on this item. And in order to get the best work out of a consultant, you will, of course, refine precisely what you want so that they can deliver. That's, that's my view. I think, I think if we go along this trajectory and keep doing this, I don't think we, I think we're micromanaging too much, and I don't think we're doing the best job we could do.
Councilmember Schmidt.
The goal of the project, I guess, is to get engagement, and engagement is defined in three ways: ideas, design, action. My understanding of engagement is, good engagement comes from having good data. You have information available, controversial information available for people to talk about, you will get engagement. I can make a list of the types of data that we need to have a good discussion about Our Palo Alto, where we're going and the comp plan. Just examples: development impact fee updates, new transportation assessment measures, point-to-point, traffic counts on key streets on an annual basis, build-out in each commercial area of down, assessment and possible alternatives to intercept studies, assessment and replacement of online transportation surveys, assessment of downtown parking needs. I can keep on going. But it seems to me, wouldn't this be more effective if half of that money was spent on gathering good data and having it available for engagement?
Are you looking for a response to that question? I, I think our feeling is that we already collect and have a lot of data, you're, you're self-aware of the existing conditions report we disseminated at the end of August.
Yeah.
That's just an example, because it has a tremendous amount of data in it, which we have not engaged with the community on. Other than posting that material on our website, we have not had an opportunity to engage upon that material, and that's.
I've been to Our Palo Alto meetings, I've been to the coffees, I've been to panels, and the problem is, they don't start with provocative data. If you have some data that is making a provocative point, you'll get people to disagree and, and state alternatives and positions. And I think that's where you're going to get engagement from, from a community who's very sophisticated, very active, and tends to come out when there is data available.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. I think we all remember that first Our Palo Alto event around who are we? It was about demographic trends in our community, very well-attended, and that's the kind of event we would like to continue. We had a series of events early in the, in the year about demographics, about housing affordability, about critical issues, growth management strategies that are used in various communities, and then, of course, the Designing Alternative Futures workshop that was part of the Comprehensive Plan Update series this summer. I feel, as I think some of you do, that the momentum has slowed a little bit, and maybe part of that is the council's decision in early August to pause and reconsider whether we should attack some short-term zoning things in, in advance of the comprehensive plan update. But part of it, I think, is that we just do not have the capacity to plan events around ideas and data like demographics and housing affordability on an ongoing basis, while we're also doing the work of the comprehensive plan update, and the work of the planning applications that are walking into our office every week, and all of the other transportation and parking and initiatives that we have on our plate. So, in the budget, the council gave us the authorization to bring onboard a consultant to help with these activities, and that is what we're proposing. It, you know, I can understand if the council no longer wants us to go in that direction, but then we, we will not have the ability to do those kind of events around data that you're suggesting.
Can I suggest that if, if we're not going to be able to get to a conclusion here or vote on the motion, it's 10 to 11, and we need to get Councilmember Klein out by 11:30, and we have a closed session, and I think we have our consultant in the back room here on. Should we maybe table this for another meeting? We have two more, we have two more people that want to speak, so. Yeah. So, could we maybe pick this up next Monday night?
We've got a lot going on, I mean.
Well, first off, I don't know if Councilmember Schmidt is finished. Are you finished? All right, then, okay, Councilmember Klein, maybe you can help move this along.
Yes, I'd move a substitute motion that we approve the two-year contract, all the language that's on the screen, and then add at the end, provided however, staff shall not, the manager shall not expend more than $75,000 of such contract without returning to the council for approval. Such approval request to contain appropriate metrics showing the, the, whether or not the consultant's efforts have been successful.
Would you like to speak any further to your motion?
No, this is pretty much what the manager had suggested a half hour, 45 minutes ago.
Right, and Councilmember Berman?
And I think it's a, it's a reasonable approach, so that we can see whether we're really getting our money's worth, and, and it will enable staff to get the things started, and I think it's a reasonable number. I couldn't argue very much if somebody said $60,000 or $80,000, but $75,000 seemed the right amount to me.
All right, Councilmember Burt and Berman?
I agree with what he said. Oh, sorry.
Okay, no, he, he has his light on, so I'm going to move over to Councilmember Burt.
So, I agree with the substitute motion, but I'd like to offer one amendment, and that is around this returning with objective, I mean, metrics. And metrics really flow out of well-defined objectives. And, and I do think that actually we, we haven't flushed out what we're trying to achieve here. Metrics are about measuring what we've said we're trying to achieve. So I would just like to offer that the motion add preceding metrics that, well-defined objectives and metrics. Okay? And then I just want to comment briefly as well. I think that we've had a decent explanation about why this is right conceptually. I think it is correct, that really this hasn't come to us with enough information on, with, with clarity and concreteness on what's going to be resulting from this project. I will say that I believed for a long while that Palo Alto as a community expects and needs more and better engagement than the average community, and we don't invest that at our peril. And engagement is not PR. It's two-way, meaningful engagement and dialogue with the community. And I believe that that's the intent of this initiative, and I certainly hope so, that's the basis for my vote. So I'll be supporting the substitute motion on, on that basis.
Okay, with that, let's vote.
We need to fix the language.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It doesn't say what Councilmember Burt said.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so, preceding, it should say, concrete objectives and metrics prior to spending greater than $70,000.
It wasn't concrete, it was applicable metrics.
Oh. How about clear objectives and applicable metrics?
Fine.
Councilmember Holman, I see your light on, you're going to speak to this?
I don't need to now, this has been clarified and happy to support it.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
I should show you five?
Just don't show us yet. Okay, that motion carries with Vice Mayor Niss absent. I'm going to move the next item, item number 22, to the next council meeting, and we're going to go into closed session. going to go into closed session.
Fine. Every time we move an item, it costs money. We have people here, and I'm just saying, we watch money, probably costs us $1,000 every time we move an item.
No, I understand that. I'm happy to stay till midnight if we need to, but we need to get in.
Reasons, but this stuff isn't for you.
Right, okay. Thank you. So we will adjourn to closed session.